Let me call to order the Williamsport City Council meeting. It is Thursday, June 8th. Please rise for invocation by Councilman Don Naviallo, followed by Pledge of Allegiance.
We're here again tonight to address the challenges our city faces. We begin by asking ourselves, how do we make those things we desire happen? Response is always the same. We do so by way of fact-seeking vetting and teamwork, driven by common sense, mutual respect, and simple courtesy. We work to create positive outcomes and to avoid as much controversy as possible. We work to obtain facts that help us address realities. Our tasks this evening have the potential to move our community into the future in a productive manner. With that must come the acceptance of change tempered by our experiences of the past. Experience is the best teacher. Our responsibility is to utilize that experience to guide us into the future, all the while seeking the help and input from our citizens. With their involvement, our future looks far more promising. Thank you.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to testify on the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, we're a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We're gonna... Next item on the agenda then is approval of City Council meeting minutes stated May 25th, 2017. Can I have a motion and a second to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Hearing motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Naviallo.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those are approved. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had two requests for that this evening, so I'll call them up each in turn. First, we have Scott Miller. Mr. Miller, could you please approach the bench, name and address for the record, as you know, and you have three minutes on an item that is on tonight's agenda.
Scott Miller, 822 Tucker Street, Williamsport.
Thank you.
I'm gonna read from the type statement. I wanna make it easier for Ms. Frank to enter it into the official record. Tonight's City Council takes up the issue of our form of government. There are four forms available to voters, but I think at this time another form or issue should be discussed inasmuch as to our form of government. Allison Hirsch, whom I hope everyone will keep in their thoughts and prayers in light of her recent surgery, has talked to me for some years about dividing the city into wards. I have to say, I tend to agree with her. In the times I have run for City Council and talked with many, many people from all over the city, I have found many felt like their areas were not well represented by City Council. Six of you on City Council and the mayor all live within about a dozen blocks of one another. While I can remember two of you not even knowing exactly where the eastern border of the city was. If you don't even know where the city line is, can you really represent me and my concerns? Yes, sure. The train whistle over in Jaysburg didn't bother me, and the closing of Sheridan Elementary didn't affect their property values. The flooding on Graphius Run didn't flood the east end or the west side. Does the crime and drug problem and what I think of as the heart of Williamsport impact me? Exactly how many of us really care that much about the central business district? The closest firehouse to me is halfway across the city. Why should I pay higher taxes for places and services I barely benefit from or get much representation in? But we all care about our neighborhoods, so I think while the city is taking up the issue of our form of government, we should include an amendment. I'll call it the Hirsch Amendment. Let voters decide if we should divide the city into wards where each of four or five wards have a sitting council person with two or three at-large council persons, so that the unique issues and problems that our city neighborhoods face are well addressed and represented on and by the city council. Can the seven of you really say that you are or would be willing to cede your seat on City Council? We are all human and as such are subject to our flaws and shortcomings, so let's put it to the voters and let them decide. Tonight, I ask you to add the Hirsch Amendment to this proposal. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. The next request comes from Bill Hall. Mr. Hall, welcome back to Council chambers. You know the drill.
Hi, Bill Hall, 1212 Monroe Place, Williamsport, PA. Council President, Members of Council, Administration, Mayor, City Clerk, and anybody in the audience that kind of remembers me. I'm here to speak about number eight on your agenda tonight also, the ordinance authorizing and directing a vote on the approval of a charter commission and election of charter commission members to serve on first reading. This is a copy of Third Class City Code. About an inch thick, probably 1% of the people in the city of Williamsport know it exists, and probably 1% of that 1% have actually read it. Norm has, I know that, and I know I have. And then probably if I sit here tonight, I'll read the whole thing again because Greado just dumped his whole desk on you, so... In one section of this book, you're gonna find the law that outlines the process that we follow to change our form of government. I'm not here to talk about the forms of government, I'm here to talk about the process. So if you'll give me... The law gives two options. The first option, I like to call it the option from the bottom up option. This is when the citizens are so upset with their form of government that they have to circulate a petition, and that petition has to be signed by 15% of your 15,000 voters, or about 2,200 people. They have 30 days to do that from the time that the county board of elections is notified that they want to put a question on the ballot. So within 30 days, they have to get 2,200 signatures on that petition. That hasn't happened, not that I know of. I've driven Uber now for seven months in the city of Williamsport. I've carried thousands of people, and I can tell you that not one single time has the question of form of government come up. And you can believe me, we have political discussions in my car, a lot of them. So that's the bottom up option, where apparently there's no interest. The second option is called, I like to call it from the top down option. This is when City Council, rights and ordinance, as they've done here tonight, and they were presented at this meeting, and that ordinance imposes the question of changing your form of government on voters from the top down. And in that option, four people, not 2,200 people, four people get to decide to put the question on the ballot. That's a long way from 2,200, I would think. We have had this current form of government since 1972. It's marked there on the wall behind Council President. Going back just to 1995, because my memory doesn't go back further than that around this town, I just wanted to look at a list of some of the accomplishments of this form of government since 1995, 22 years. Using government incentives, encouragement, permitting processes that we have with codes, and working with federal and state governments, under your current form of government, we have grown Penn College to a first-class school, replaced the Main Street Bridge, replaced the Arch Street Bridge, replaced the Market Street Bridge, we've seen a Hampton Inn built, a Perkins, Wegmans, two Marriott Hotels, an expanded Holiday Inn with an additional Holiday Inn Express, a greatly improved hospital with over 3,000 employees, Trade and Transit 1, for those of you that remember that, along with the 4th Street parking deck across the street from it, Pine Square, Church Street parking deck, Kohl's, Highmark Building, a greatly improved Bowman Field, Downtown Suma complex, Trade and Transit 2 with a real nice surface lot behind it, TVs on all night, that Uber drivers like to thank you for that there, Mr. Nichols, gives us light. Los Park Homes, if you remember those, Memorial Homes. And I can go on with what has been accomplished under this form of government in 22 years. Those projects, they came about, those successful projects came about despite good or bad mayors and despite good or bad councils. They came about because our current form of government works. So my question for council is why? What reasons do you have to want to change the form of government that you would use a top-down and force the question on the people? I don't know. And why now? We have an election year right now. Three of you are up for election, which happens to be the year also in which we have the lowest voter participation in the four-year cycle. That means that there will be fewer people coming out despite what questions are on the ballot, simply because that's what happens statistically across 150 years. Then I'm told that council will vote to put this question to the people, and then they will step aside and not respond to anything about it, because after all, it's for the people to decide. Council has already decided the people are going to be forced to decide this with the lowest voter turnout that they can have, and four months to sell or not sell the idea. Thomas Jefferson told us, and I know there are some people here who are critical of Thomas Jefferson, but regardless of his personal life, he taught us that we are not to change our form of government for light and transient reasons. I read that as including political and personal reasons. What you do here will affect our city for the next four or five generations. This is not an exercise in a political science class. This is reality. And what you do will affect us all. And I can't see, after looking at this brief record, and I'm sure I could go back and read more and find more and give you even more examples of how this form of government has worked despite who the mayor is and despite who is on council, didn't have the time. But what I'm suggesting to you is that I can't see anything here except light and transient reasons to even have this ordinance in front of you tonight. You don't have any justification to move forward that I can see, and I'm sure some of you might have the strength to not bend to peer pressure with your vote tonight.
Mr. Hall.
This is one of those defining moments where the people you represent get to see your real character, and I hope that reflecting on what I just said to you, you will vote your own ordinance down. And if people want this to happen, let them make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna change the order a little bit because we have a number of guests in the audience this evening, so that we're gonna jump it down to number 17, Certificate of Mr. Girardi didn't give you fair warning to be able to get up there, but if you're ready, we can go on to that item?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Councilman Williamson, or President Williamson, Members of the Council. What I have before you is a request for eight, West 4th Street. The owner of the property is Joseph Musto. There's a tenant going into the spot. It's called Downtown Poppy. Well, they're requested to erect a 43-inch by 96-inch wall-mounted sign. It's a die-bond type of sign, which is basically metal on the outside, a plastic center, and then metal on the other side. It has printed vinyl lettering applied, and also the tenant wishes to attach a planter box in the front of the building. I did attach photos of the picture of the sign, and then also a picture of the planter box where it will be located. And if you have any other questions of me, more than happy to answer them, or of the tenant, I do have a representative here.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this certificate?
Go move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Comments or questions? Mrs. Katz.
This group of, two women really, they own Patinas, okay? And what they're doing is thankfully, they're expanding their business downtown, and we're really all excited about what they're doing and what they bring to the downtown. They've been down there for several years at this point, and if people don't realize what they do, they have fantastic jewelry, they now carry a clothing line. So we're, like I said, we're really excited, and I can't say welcome to the neighborhood because you've been there for a while.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the certificate.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Naviallo.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that certificate is approved. Next item on the agenda is a request for demolition for 635 Hepburn Street. Mr. Girardi.
Yes. This request is for demolition from St. Joseph's, the Worker Parish, for the structure located at 635 Hepburn Street, which is located in NRU Residential District. This is the former Mala de la Rosa Church. They are talking to church structure only. Family Promise is next door, which is on the church parcel ground and also behind it, directory, but also remain. It's just the church itself. At this time, the owner intends to use the space for a green area and build a shrine. I also attached with that a little breakdown request information, which you all have, concerning the reasons for the demolition, explanation, and our future use. If you have any questions of me, more than happy to answer those, or we do have a representative here.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the demolition?
Go move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Comments or questions? Ms. Mealy.
Joe, did you actually inspect the structure? Is there in fact structural?
There is. I was actually there several years back, and there is a front corner tower is actually settling. The former Graphius Run ran underneath that church, and we believe some of that water has eroded the foundation underneath it. So Maxler Contractors actually went back in years ago and slurry mixed and filled that, but now it slowly has been washing away again. So there is structural integrity problems with that front corner.
Interesting. I like the concept of a, I mean, as much as I hate to see this lose its building, which I think has some real interest in the community, I like the concept of a green space there as well. Is the church committing to maintain that green space?
Yes.
I know that this property hasn't been excellently maintained in the time since it's been vacant.
Right. It would be their responsibility to maintain it, weed it, cut the grass, and so forth, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Naviallo.
Just a couple of quick comments. This is, in my mind, a bit of a sad circumstance. There's been so much local history that has transpired in that particular building. For many families, I'm assuming many sitting here have had experiences in that building. I know that I certainly have. A lot of happy and solemn events at the same time also took place there. I feel we're sort of losing a major sort of emotional component to our community here to some extent, and it's sad to see these things go by the wayside and sort of interfere with our continuing history. But as we understand, you know, things do move along, times change and circumstances change. I think we're sadly just a bit of a victim in this particular case, but we wish those who are about to take over this property the best, and hopefully it will be as good as it can be as time goes along. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
One further. Just a quick note, I'm assuming the property will probably be available for sale if someone more interested in building on it at some point. I guess I'm just asking, is there any sort of record put in the deed regarding the subterranean, the issues, the underground issues? If anyone were to try to build on that, I don't know if there's any sort of path for that information to stay with the land.
Right. I think you'll find that there would be in our records, our records, when they do a deed search or they do a, I forget what it's called, when someone sells one property to another, it'll be in that particular thing, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the request for demolition.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Naviallo.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the request for demolition is approved.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Next item, we're gonna move up to number 13, Resolution to Approve MOU between the city and the Williamsport Sanitary Authority. Mrs. Frank, when you get the chance.
Resolution to authorize the execution of a MOU between the city of Williamsport and the Williamsport Sanitary Authority, whereas the City Council of the city of Williamsport authorized the amendment to the Articles of Incorporation of the Williamsport Sanitary Authority to enable the said authority to also provide for stormwater system planning, management, and implementation, authorized by Resolution Number 8487 dated August 6, 2015. Whereas Resolution 8538 dated April 4, 2016, the City Council of the city of Williamsport authorized the execution of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Williamsport and the Williamsport Sanitary Authority, providing for the stormwater management services feasibility study by Arcadis Engineering, whereas the Williamsport Sanitary Board of Directors ratified the Operations Committee approval for the stormwater management feasibility study results and recommendations on March 22, 2017. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council, the city of Williamsport, like Cummings County, Pennsylvania, authorized the execution of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Williamsport and the Williamsport Sanitary Authority, which implements the recommendation for the stormwater management feasibility study.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion and a second on the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Greado.
Yes, good evening, President Williamson, Members of Council. As the resolution has indicated, about a little over two years, or around two years ago, council by resolution authorized the sanitary authority to amend its Articles of Incorporation to address stormwater management planning, basically to be able to conduct the feasibility study that's been, began about 14 months ago, to determine where the city can go in the stormwater management planning and operation, and to meet the needs of the city because of the changing regulations and stormwater management needs, as well as some of the issues related to the levee system and the cross pipes, as you've been aware and been kept up to date on that. So this MOU will implement those recommendations. Doug Keith is here, along with representatives from the sanitary authority. Doug and the sanitary authority staff really kind of took the ball on this as far as the feasibility study with all of the public meetings, keeping the stormwater advisory committee in review, which council has been represented. And so we've come today to implement that through this resolution. Doug's here, and I don't really want to elaborate anymore. Doug can explain the process that went through and some of the timeframe, so I'll let Doug speak to that.
Thank you. Welcome to council.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council, City Administration, Mayor Campana. And I can elaborate as much as you'd like. I've got a lot of, I've got a lot of information here. In keeping with the length of your agenda, though, I thought I'd limit myself to just a few comments, so if you don't mind. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce Johnny Meyer, one of our board members and the chairman of our Subcommittee for Stormwater. He was certainly integral in helping us get this thing started. Stormwater management program, as we're recommending tonight, is a comprehensive effort to address stormwater infrastructure deficiencies, meet municipal separate storm sewer system regulatory requirements, that's your MS4 permit, and implement a fair and equitable funding plan. A fully managed program is fundamental to the public health, safety, and welfare, and to the protection of persons and property within the city. City workers should be commended for the outstanding work they do, but with increasing regulatory requirements and growing fiscal needs, the city has a responsibility to seek the most efficient and effective manner of operating, maintaining, and enhancing the stormwater system. The authorities have a staff dedicated to maintaining and upgrading water and wastewater pipes and pumps, often working right alongside the separate but similar stormwater infrastructure. The authorities have a trained and experienced staff to deal with increasingly complex regulatory concerns, working closely with both DEP and EPA to meet permit requirements. And as a combined sewer system, the Williamsport Sanitary Authority has a vested interest in making sure stormwater is appropriately managed. Simply put, placing a stormwater management program within the context of the authority's current work will result in synergies and efficiencies that cannot be obtained with any other organization. Formal work began almost two years ago with the change of the Williamsport Sanitary Authority's charter, granting us the ability to perform stormwater management work. We immediately enlisted the help of Arcadis Engineering to guide us through a feasibility study, which our Board of Directors approved this past March. And in the audience, we have Tanya McCurety of Arcadis Engineering. She came in in case there were any questions from a technical nature or nationwide trends, those kind of things. Study was then presented to the City Public Works Committee for their review. The recommendations in the feasibility study mirror those provided by the Stormwater Advisory Committee, which was formed with the help of Penn Strategies. The Advisory Committee consisted of individuals representing the business, residential, and nonprofit interests of the community. Their findings included, among others, that stormwater management is a utility service that manages stormwater runoff from developed properties, just as wastewater management is a utility service that manages wastewater flows from developed properties.
Bless you.
And two, that there is a significant need for a stormwater management program that will proactively address health and safety concerns and federal and state regulatory requirements, and that a dedicated stormwater utility charge for all developed properties in the city of Williamsport is necessary to support such a program. And three, that the city of Williamsport should implement the stormwater program developed by the authority, inclusive of the rate structure, which the Advisory Committee agreed is a fair and reasonable method of allocating costs to property owners. After the Stormwater Advisory Committee concluded their work, the authority held multiple public meetings to review the results of the feasibility study. The overall consensus from these public meetings was that although nobody wants additional costs, there is a real need for stormwater infrastructure upgrades and enhanced maintenance within the city of Williamsport, and that the sanitary authority is uniquely positioned to do this work most efficiently. The authorities will be able to leverage its existing personnel and equipment to provide the lowest-cost option to meeting regulatory requirements in inspecting, evaluating, and upgrading infrastructure. The authority developed a budget and plan of action for the first five years of this program. Of primary importance is the GIS mapping and physical assessment of the existing infrastructure, which would take place over a 10-year period, and involve the systematic location, cleaning, televising, and inspecting of all stormwater pipes, manholes, and catch basins. Emergency repairs have been budgeted, as well as engineering studies, to enhance those already complete or about to be underway with the city. All told, about approximately $5.5 million in program costs are expected during the first five years, with approximately 70% of those costs paid through non-residential rates, businesses and industry, government agencies, and nonprofits. While much more work should be done, this will be a substantial increase over past efforts. If the city chooses to approve the recommendations before evening, the authority could begin substantive work on the system this summer, with billing anticipated to begin in September. Charges would be shown as an additional item on quarterly water and sewer bills, and would total $11.90 per quarter for the average residential property. Residential properties less than .1 acres would receive a discount, while those over .5 acres would be charged twice that amount. Non-residential properties and those residential properties greater than two-family will be billed based on the amount of impervious area on their parcel, expressed as a multiple of the residential rate. In addition, a $5 flat charge will apply to all properties equally. Impervious areas, such as rooftops, driveways, and sidewalks, are the most important factor influencing stormwater runoff, and this method is acknowledged by EPA to be a fair and equitable manner of cost allocation. At this time, I'd like to introduce my senior staff of the authorities. Chuck Hauser is our Director of Engineering, Wendy Walter, our Director of Compliance, Safety, and Security, and John Baker, our Director of Finance. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. I'm, I know that this resolution in particular was reviewed this week by both the Finance Committee and the Public Works Committee, but I'm gonna ask Mr. Smith from Public Works to give his report first, because they've been, that committee has taken the lead for council for the last two years, really, to explore the merits and the drawbacks of this approach, and I know, well, first, I want to thank you and your committee for all the hard work that you've done over the last couple of years, and so this is a final step of not just this week's review of this, but really a long and detailed process that you've gone through. So, Mr. Smith.
The Public Works Committee, which consists of three members, myself, Councilman Naviallo, and Councilwoman Katz, were charged with a task back a couple of years ago or more when Mr. when Mr. Greto brought to us, along with Bill Wright, that was, at that point in time, was Supervisor of Streets and Parks, this MS4 program. And at first, obviously, we had no idea what it was, till Mr. Greto spent quite a bit of time explaining to us what the MS4 program was. Since that time, we've had some interaction with citizens, taxpayers, stating, as they found out what MS4 is. Why do we have to do this? Why do we have to spend this cost? And for anyone that is watching or listening to this, what you can do is go online and look at CFR, that's called Federal Code of Federal Regulations, Part 122, and start reading that. And you will immediately find out why we have to do this. This is under federal law. This isn't something that we just decided we wanted to do. So, we started this project, that is pointed out, has taken a couple of years now, and we looked at, can the City of Williamsport handle this large project? We spent quite a bit of time studying that. We looked at what equipment we currently have, what equipment would have to be purchased, what administrative costs would be involved in doing this. And then we decided, well, let's look at the sanitary authority, because the fact is they already work with underground piping of supplying water through the Municipal Water Authority, and sewage through the Sewer Authority. We began meetings with those folks and got more details on how they effectively run their operation. We had some pretty good ideas how, but we spent quite a bit of time meeting with them, hearing explanations, and several meetings later, we felt that, boy, this is going to cost the city, taxpayers, an enormous amount of money, and we're going to be duplicating something that the sanitary authority already does. They're already in the ground with pipes. As a matter of fact, when they're doing excavations for water lines or sewer, our piping is right in there in the ground. They have all that capability. They've got the administrative capability to do the paperwork, billing. That's been in place for quite a number of years. Again, we would have to go out and start that from scratch, and when we looked at the amount of dollars, we felt this is far bigger than what the City of Williamsport can handle. So we did begin the process of, how could we work in collaboration with the sanitary authority to achieve the results that we want? And one of the things that we looked at from the onset was, we want to make certain that the rate payer is paying a fair amount of money. And we had several slide presentations, PowerPoints. Their engineering firm, which has much experience in this, came in and met with us. And the fair and equitable way, and I don't want to go into all those details, they are available, we can provide that, but you can be assured that this committee, along with the Water and Sanitary Authority, have done their very best to come up with the proper rate structure process. And as we all know, in some cases in the past, the Water Authority's been penalized for giving us good water at low prices, and that's hurt us in the Chesapeake Bay Initiative and some other areas. So we knew they had a good reputation for being able to do this. Subsequent meetings that we worked with them went very well, and working with their administrative staff and their Board of Directors, we felt very comfortable in the back-and-forth dialogue in working this out. This MOU is several pages long, and I think, Mr. Keith, you did a good job in summarizing it, because we could spend hours upon this. There were public meetings. We are also available, council people, to discuss this with any of the ratepayers, taxpayers, residents, and I'm certain that folks from the Water Authority would also, if they were being queried. So we have done our best to have public meetings and bring this information out. There's just a couple of highlights that I wanted to go into, not to belabor it, but one of the things we're talking about is, we have certain pieces of equipment that could be usable by them. We don't have a lot, but we are going to enter into an agreement with certain pieces that they would be able to utilize in this. But again, I point out, they have most all of it. We have very little. As we went through the process of doing this, we came out with a feasibility study, the executive summary, which details exactly how this process unfolded after this, the meetings that were subsequently held. Also, as Mr. Keith pointed out, cost-wise, this is about a $5.5 million job that they are working on. We have seen the structure of how that is going to be paid for over a period of time. We have approved that. We asked questions concerning that. There's also, along with this, a stormwater management feasibility study and recommendations of how we go about this. And one of the things that we're looking at, and we all are aware of this, is there are some unknowns to this. The city stormwater piping system has not been inspected in quite a while. So we don't know exactly what the total condition is of this piping. There were some assumptions made, there were some tests made, but until they actually get in there and take a look, we could be looking at some unknowns. It's just as when you take your car in, you've got some rust on your vehicle, and typically they give you an estimate based on, well, when we get into it, it could change. Do we think it will change? At this point, we don't actually know, until they get in there and take a look. We know that this is going to be a multi-year project. This isn't going to be something that we can do in one, two, three years. It's, it's over a period of 10 to 15 years. And if you looked at replacing all of that piping, should it be required, you're looking at many, many, many years because of the cost involved. And one of the questions that was posed to us was, well, let's say we find sections that are bad, how are we going to do that? That is where we come into the multi-year project. So much would be done in a certain year, more would be done the next year, and it would have to go through that timeframe until the piping could be replaced. And it could be, I'm being facetious about it, one of the members said, well, this could be a 100-year process. Yeah, I guess it could be, because the problem lies in the fact that when you can't see piping or electrical wiring that's in the ground, you tend to forget about it. You don't see it, you don't know what's happening down there, and unless you inspect it and go through the process over a period of years, you really don't know what you're getting into years later. So that's one of the things that's been taken into consideration in this, and this is another step during this MOU. And as Mr. Keith pointed out, we'd be looking at probably July of starting the, the rate structure and going into the fall. So without getting into a lot of further technical details and so forth, as President Williamson has pointed out, there's been a lot of time spent on this. This was not a process that was just pushed through. We spent many, many hours in meetings discussing this, and I, I just want to say that it has been such a pleasure in working with the Water and Sanitary Authority, and also their consulting firm. They've been very, very helpful, and I do have to say that, yes, it took a little bit of time, but we were all on the same page, we were all trying to accomplish the same result at the end of the day, and I think we are headed in the proper direction. Therefore, we voted in the positive for this resolution to send it to the full council for their approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Mealy, finance?
Finance also forwarded this to the full body of council with, with, with our approval and our recommendation. I would, I, I think we observed multiple times in the course of the finance meeting how fortunate the city was to have an existing authority that, that has always been responsible with both our water and our sewer, and is now willing to take on this further obligation on behalf of the city. It, it seems pretty clear that, that the Water Authority is, the Water and Sewer Authority is better positioned to act as a stormwater authority than the city would be to manage similar responsibilities. And, and consequently, in the long run, while there are continuing and increasing costs with stormwater in the state of Pennsylvania and in the country as a whole, the Water Authority will provide us with the best cost-sharing options, and also the most effective operation, which is going to make it less costly for, for the citizens of Williamsport in total. It's not going to be free, but it's going to be better than it would have been, I think, had we as a, had we as a municipality run it instead of an authority. And, and that's, obviously, the cost-sharing feature factors heavily in terms of finances, look at the whole thing. The, the fact that, that the authority is levying a fee allows it to be enacted slightly differently than a tax, and, and allows us to, to share the financial obligations for stormwater across both nonprofits and, and for-profit and residential enterprises within the city. So a more equitable sharing of the cost of, of stormwater management. So, so finance, by and large, agreed with Public Works. We thought, we thought this was an excellent idea, and an idea whose time has come. The one thing that I would say is that, it would be my feeling personally, Mr. Smith, that we've actually moved pretty quickly on this. The, the state of Pennsylvania allowed stormwater authorities beginning in 2013, and here it is, 2017, and we've already moved on to ours. And for a small municipality, that's, that's really pretty impressive. And, and for someone used to the speed of government, I think, I think we've done pretty well. And so, anyway, this is, this provides, you know, an opportunity to meet a number of requirements that are coming our way, an opportunity to fix aging infrastructure in the city. And, and I think that we also need to look at this as, as presenting possibilities for Williamsport, too. There are a number of, of communities in the state of Pennsylvania that have really risen to the challenge with stormwater management, and, and Williamsport can be one of them, and hopefully, the partnership with, with the Water and Sewer Authority will allow us to take advantage of, of the opportunity to be a city at the forefront as well. Okay?
Thank you. As the one member who doesn't serve on either of those committees, I think everybody, oh, oh, Mr. Henderson does. I was just going to open up with a comment for myself. I had the privilege of representing council at several of the, the public meetings through this process, to both see the plan presented several times, and then to see both stakeholders and the public reacting to the plan. And I think whoever it was that commented tonight, that while all of us would prefer to not have additional fees, that this is a very equitable process. I think it said 70% of the funds are being paid by non-residential entities as well, including the nonprofits in our community. It's based on the impervious land of those entities and, and the lot size of the residential properties, that the fairness of this plan was very well thought through, and, and so I applaud the Water and Sewer Authority Board and their staff, as well as the, Mr. Greto and, and our Public Works Committee, and, and all those who worked on it to come up with that side of things. And fought, also to applaud them for finding, trying to find the right balance between what is needed and what can be afforded, right? This will not result in a fast resolution of the existing problems, but it will result, it will mean a proactive progress towards a solution. And then, third, I think I'd like to point out that, as Mr. Smith said, many of the, the pieces that we are putting into place here, assuming it passes, would, are in response to what is happening at the federal government and has been at the federal government over the last few years, but one of the questions that's raised is, under the new administration, might that all change? I don't think most of it will, but here's the other part. We, as neighbors, as citizens of this community, should remind ourselves that we have pipes that are mostly 100 years old, under the ground. We've reacted to when problems have existed, but those pipes now 100 years old, often made out of bricks and, and terracotta, have not had proactive attention paid to them for much of that 200 years. And to come up with a, a solution to, and as a result, we see problems like Graffius Run and, and other areas of the city that can't handle the, the stormwater because of a system that was designed for a city 100 years ago, and because of the maintenance that didn't occur over those 100 years. We need to get proactive, even if there was no state or federal requirements being placed on us, because we can't let our neighbors deal with the problems that our neighbors are dealing with right now anymore. And so even if everything were to change in Harrisburg and in Washington, we've got to take care of ourselves, and, and this is a proactive step that is the result of a two-year partnership between the administration, council, the two authorities and their staff that comes up, as close as I can tell, to fair and equitable as possible. And in those public meetings, I saw people respond once they understood that they thought so as well. Ms. Katz?
Not only being on the Public Works Committee, I was also on the Stormwater Advisory Committee as a council rep, and the group of people that we worked with was a broad spectrum of people. And with the guidance of Doug and Chuck, and also Wendy, and John, and, and other people, we learned a lot about pumps and pipes, and I've learned to embrace them lovingly. The thing that was really incredible with these meetings is, we really took the billing aspect of this really seriously, of how this was going to be done. And the, the information, I think, was, was really great. We were fed accurate information, so we became very knowledgeable of how this was going to be done. So this is being done very fairly, as far as it being presented to the public. And as one person working so closely with all of you for, what, over a year at this point, on that committee, I think everybody should respect and, and, and thank you for everything that you've done, to keep everything in, in order as far as how we're doing this for our city. So thank you very much, and it was a joy to work with you all.
Thank you.
And let me add my thanks to you, Mrs. Katz, for taking on that extra role on the advisory committee.
Oh, they, they fed us well.
But I should have recognized your contribution, all of us, so thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Other comments or questions from Mr. Noviello?
Just don't want to rehash what was just said, but basically, there was a rather wide learning curve here. And I've mentioned a number of times that we had really had to learn a second language almost to come up to speed. So I, I was happy for and proud of the fact, frankly, that the city has people like those in front of us now that are bringing this forward to us, and doing so in a professional manner, that left a lot of questions answered, frankly, instead of unanswered, which was very encouraging. Their commitment and their professionalism, in my mind, actually buoyed us through the course of what now seems to be more than two years, at least in my experience of thinking. So the city should be happy that we have such people involved with us, and at such a level of professionalism, on a rather serious and involved project, two years, again, and we're still not quite there yet. Obviously, we have a way to go in this stage of events, but I think with the people that we have sort of leading our charge here, and the fact that they have educated us to the extent that we feel good about the decisions that we're soon to be making here, that it has really played out very well for all of us here. So thank you, Doug, and all those who were involved. I think we're just about ready to offer Chuck Hauser an honorary seat on the Public Works Committee, but we haven't quite gotten that far yet, but we'll, we'll get there one of these days, Chuck. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Henderson? Just to echo that, I think we can be confident that, that the authority will be able to handle this, and handle it well. And so that's a great comfort to all of us, because there's a lot we don't know. But we've, we've been, we've gotten a problem to deal with, and, and I think we've been able to deal with it as logically and fairly as possible, as, as we have learned.
deal with it as logically and fairly as possible, as we have learned through the many different meetings. And so I would echo that, though there may be a lot that we may not understand in different aspects of it. As citizens, I think we can be very confident that those leading the charge here will do it well and fairly. And so I appreciate that as they present that to us. I really do. So I thank you.
I think both you and Mr. Novello make good points in terms of the complexity of this issue. And, you know, when faced with complex issues, putting it in the hands of professionals trained to deal with those complex issues is often a good choice. So thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Novello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution carries. Thank you again for all your hard work.
Now the hard ones begin.
We're going to jump now to Number 16, Resolution Authorizing Execution of an Engineering Agreement Between City of Williamsport and Ratu. Mrs. Frank, when you get the opportunity, please.
Resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering agreement between the City of Williamsport and Ratu for the design of Graffius Run Flood Mitigation Project. Be it hereby resolved that the mayor and the city controller are authorized to execute the attached engineering agreement between the City of Williamsport and Ratu, 130 Court Street, Williamsport, Pennsylvania, for the Graffius Run Flooding Mitigation Project. In accordance with their proposal dated December 7, 2016, revised on May 5, 2017, lump sum value not to exceed $64,760. Be it further resolved that this agreement is conditioned upon receipt of notification of 2017 Act 13 funds.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution, please?
You'll move.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Mr. Mayor, how are you this evening?
Good evening, Dr. President, members of City Council. Rebecca Holliday and myself are going to present this resolution to you this evening. And for all the individuals that live in the section of Graffius Run, positive things are going to happen, so we want to let you know starting tonight. First of all, the purpose is to create long-term initiatives to develop plans and cost estimates for design of Graffius Run flood mitigation. In recent time, the administration has worked with the Public Works Committee in regards to improvements at the site. For instance, we've created rain gauges. We've placed a backhoe in that area, placed a camera system, advanced warning system, its alarm over a phone to let us know that this is happening. We're having some issues with some additional flooding. The objective is to commence work on June 26. Currently, we have $29,000 in the budget. We've already been contacted by the county, and we will have the additional dollars to cover the $64,760 total amount. We will be billed each month, and once again, these dollars will be coming from Act 13. They will be there. And if you take a look at the first stage, the first stage is over $7,000, so we have that. The remaining balance of $35,760 will come in July. So we are fine, and we're ready to continue to work with City Council, but most importantly, making changes in that area for those citizens. Rebecca.
Good evening, President Williamson, City Council members. Attached, you will find the resolution for your review to authorize the execution of an engineering agreement between the City and Ratu for the Graffius Run Flood Mitigation The city administration, Public Works Committee, and the Williamsport Sanitary Authority have been working with Ratu on a scope of work that will address the flood issues within the Graffius Run watershed. The scope of work includes three public meetings, two conceptual designs, and one final conceptual design for the debris removal and collection system at the headwalls, and also develop design alternatives for the protection of the downstream flood-prone areas south of the trash racks. The engineering fee for this project is $64,760. As the mayor has said, funding is available under the 2016 and the 2017 Act 13 budget. This was reviewed by both the Public Works and the Finance Committee. Based on the committee review, the resolution was amended to include a not-to-exceed amount of the $64,760. The council has been given the updated version. Also, the Ratu representative, Laura Templeton, is here if you have any questions for her.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mealy from Finance.
Okay, Finance did review this item, and with that small amendment, forwarded to the full body of council with positive recommendation. The only net effect of the amendment, to add the not-to-exceed, of course, is to make certain that if we would have the opportunity to spend more money on Graffius Run, council finds out about it first. And we will have the opportunity to spend more money on Graffius Run, so nobody needs to worry about that. So aside from that, council did forward it with a positive recommendation. We should note that this is, as Ms. Holliday said, a relatively narrow scope of work, sort of preliminary investigations into some of the issues that we're facing at Graffius Run, that we're hoping to combine with some piping video through the Water Authority to establish more or less what our existing situation is there. Following that, any augmentation to improve the existing situation is likely to cost us a lot more money. But hopefully, with these preliminary investigations, we can maybe establish, ideally, even a few funding streams that could help us to meet those obligations and to make the situation better for the residents there along the Graffius Run. This is, I think, a very good start and an issue that we desperately need to address here as a city. And ideally, we can sort of set a prototype. I know that we do have a few other buried waterways in the city as well, and this should begin to give us an idea of our options also to address those if they become an issue as well. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
This is another project that Public Works has been working on for two or three years at least. And the problem goes back much further than that. Couple of years back, we saw a situation where quite a few homes in the Elmira Street area were flooded. Water was cascading down Elmira Street. It was going into residents' basements, and it was literally a mess. And they came in and they discussed that issue with us. So we began the process of looking at, well, what can we do? And we looked at it, first of all, from a warning perspective. The gauges at that time that provided the water level were quite old, not really working properly. The notification system was very much outdated. So we looked at, well, what can we do alerting-wise? We knew that we had this green picker machine out by St. Luke's Church on Market Street area that would clean the trash racks. And what these trash racks are, they are placed on an angle in the waterway to collect debris that comes down from the headwaters. There are homes along the headwaters, and during that storms, there would be tires, lumber, plastic bottles, plastic containers, you name it, and it came down there. So a number of years ago, when Bill Wright was here, he had the foresight to find, implement along the road one day, and he bought it, the city bought it, and it was reconstructed. And that was used to pick the debris out of that section. The other section on Highland Terrace also has a debris rack, same situation. And what we have been doing there is placing a backhoe at that location to take the debris out. So getting back to the monitoring system, we felt that we needed a far better monitoring system. So we looked into that, and working with Mr. Grado and Bill Wright, we came up with, we need a lot of replacement in this system. So the stream gauge level, that system was completely replaced with a unique alerting system that can be utilized by cell phone, landline, to notify certain individuals when the stream reaches a preset height. We also looked at placing cameras at those two locations so that the debris rack could be viewed to determine how much debris would be in the racks. We also worked with the county, and there was a rain gauge placed at that location. So all of these things, reporting system and in conjunction with the rain gauge, was very helpful in letting us know the condition of Graffius Run and the other run associated with it. However, the problem right now stands is, the city, we have done everything that we can do alerting-wise and removing the debris from the trash racks. So what's the next step? Well, after October of last year, we knew we had a major problem. That's when, at the headwaters of Graffius Run, there was seven inches of rain, and at the same time, at the bottom, the rain gauge indicated four inches of rain. Mr. Sillow's group was on location before the rain even started, because it was predicted. And they immediately, as the stream started rising, taking debris out. On Friday, at about 11:45 in the morning, I was out there with Mr. Sillow. By that time, they had taken six dump truck loads of debris from that stream. That's a large number of debris. When I was there at that point, there was one pile that contained concrete blocks, a lot of wood, and that was also the time that Walneck Construction Company was inundated. So here's what happened. Trash racks were kept clean. The notification system worked, but we had seven inches of water at the top and four inches at the bottom, and that is a huge volume of water to have to deal with. And what happened? It overflowed its banks. It went into the basement of the church, it went down Elmira Street, it went into It was, let's say, disastrous for those folks in that area. So we thought, well, what's our next step here? What are we going to do next? So Laura Templeton from Ratu and some of their engineering people had been working with us on a no-charge basis for, I guess, maybe a year, year and a half, doing some preliminary study work on Graffius Run. They had also located some city maps and so forth, again, at no charge to the city. We decided at that point, maybe we should ask for what would be a proposal from a consulting company to come in and take a look at this and start the process of what do we need to do now? And without belaboring that point, there are several things that they're going to be looking at, and that's part of this contract. I was surprised about a month, six weeks ago, that many, many years ago, at the headwaters of Graffius Run, there was a brewery. And this person thought it was part of the old Fluck Brewery, which is now part of, like, Coming College campus. The reason it was there was because of the huge amount of water, which, apparently, in the beer processing industry, it requires a lot of water. So I guess that lot of water's been there. The other thing that we're finding over the last few years, and it's no secret that all over across the United States, the weather patterns are changing. These deluge storms, as we call them, pass through quickly, but they also drop a huge volume of water in a very short time. I just read the other day where NOAA is now predicting with their engineering people that we're going to see more of this type of thing in the coming years. It seems to be that's the weather pattern. What causes it? I'm not going to get into that. What may cause it? I don't think anybody knows, but nevertheless, it's something that's there that has to be dealt with. So we feel, the Public Works Committee and other members of council have felt that now's the time to find out what can we do and how much is it going to cost? So this is the beginning of that process in finding out what needs to be done to handle this large volume of water. The other thing we found, which most of us knew from the beginning of this process, is Graffius Run goes underground all the way down to the Hebron Street Pumping Station, underground. And from what we have been told, some of this piping is large enough for people to crawl through. This hasn't been inspected in quite a number of years. Again, it's below ground, you don't think about it. So that's not in these phases that we're about to start, but part of the next phasing will probably have some kind of mapping of Graffius Run and the conduiting beneath the ground and what condition that that's in. We've run into this with a levee study. We had to do all the cross-piping. We had to do all the inspection of the cross-piping, and we found issues with the cross-pipes. The relief wells with the levee study, we found issues with. So yes, we do have an aging infrastructure. It needs maintenance, it needs work. There are a lot of people affected by Graffius Run, a lot of people. And this has been an ongoing problem for numerous years, and it's now come to the point where we feel that Finance Committee was able to locate the dollars to be able to start the process. We discussed this at length on Tuesday, and this has been an ongoing process. And we have voted with a positive recommendation to council to approve the Ratu proposal and move forward on looking at solving the problem with Graffius Run. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions from other members of council? Mr. Henderson.
A question here. I do see, as Mr. Smith stated, that inspecting the culvert is not a part of this phase. And that is number one on the recommendations that you have here for us. And I'm wondering, first of all, why isn't that a part of this phase? And then, secondly, what's our plan to do that in the future?
Yes, this was removed from our original scope. As the Water Authority takes over the lines, they will be conducting the inspection of Graffius Run internally.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Novello?
This, again, another one of those sort of long-passing projects we've been working on. I think it's important that we keep this process moving along as we have with continuous and further input from the Water Authority, which is going to be obviously to our great advantage on this. I would just try to hearken back to some of the incidents that have happened in the not-too-distant past. I was able to be at the site a number of different times when we had some of the major storms. And when Mr. Wright was involved with that department, his people were quickly on the job and quickly got things as well under control as they could. Mr. Sillow has picked up the gauntlet in the same manner, and his people have been sort of jolly on the spot when these issues arise as well. I don't think, at least in my point of view and from what I know of such things, that nothing more humanely could be done in this process to stop anything that developed in the long run there. You're just not going to stop a gushing water that's gushing several feet over its banks. You kind of just stand and watch in awe of what happens. The equipment we had did the best job that it could do with what we had available to us and the manner in which we had to contend with it. As Mr. Smith mentioned, some of the debris that came down actually contained sawed-off limbs from trees from up above further on the run itself, and not to mention, I'm sure, every other sort of site of debris that came down there as well, lots of plastic and things of that nature. And then, of course, when Walneck had his flood, there was even that much more debris that entered into the process as well. I think the crews handled it as best as they possibly could. The backhoe did as much as it could do, given the circumstance it was in. It's a very tight fit. If any of you have seen that out there, it's a very tight fit. Trying to work a machine of that size and scope in a small area like that is not the easiest thing to do, and I think it easiest thing to do, and I think it did a very commendable job. So I want to thank Mr. Sillow and his crews for doing as much as possibly could be done to stave off these problems, but as Mr. Smith has mentioned, it's more the volume of water as opposed to the actual facility in and of itself that we hope now will address the idea of more high volumes of water. So hopefully, we're going to maintain this pathway and come to some ultimate conclusion here finally. So I'm hoping for those people to continue that process for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions, Mrs. Katz?
I think everybody will be very happy, especially Tom Sillow. He lives under such stress. He never thought, when they predicted rain, that his blood pressure and stress level would go up 150%. It is very stressful for this man to constantly look at his phone, to figure out where the water's coming from, how much water, how much emergency equipment, how much time does he have to get up there? So we all are hoping that this will eventually come to a point where you don't have our streets and parks living under that kind of pressure. But again, I think we all thank streets and parks for everything that they do because it is. It is a very stressful situation trying to protect the properties of everybody that's in that area. So again, Tommy, thank you very much.
Thank you. A couple of comments that I'd like to make. I can remember, it was about two years ago, when we had a flooding issue at Graffius Run. I think it was in the fall, and we had a long discussion about improvements to the current system and how that was absolutely necessary as a short-term solution, but that we needed to address the issue at Graffius Run from a long-term perspective. And then soon after that discussion, the budget season rolled around, and I want to thank my colleagues here on council for having the foresight then to set aside some dollars towards Graffius Run in that year. I think it was for the 2016 budget was the first year we did so, so that we could eventually save up to this point to be able to be more proactive in finding a new solution rather than trying to place Band-Aids, or I guess if we're removing Band-Aids with pickers, out of the current system so the water can flow as best as it possibly can. And then, once we set that money aside and tried to build it up a little bit over time, then, of course, the process that we talked about earlier with stormwater and our partnership with the Water and Sewer Authorities evolved over time. And so I can remember having a number of conversations with Chuck and Doug about, you know, all right, we want to get this started and then we want to hand it off so that we can accelerate this process a little bit more than really the citywide scope that they're going to have to take on here in the next few months. And we have had the good news, I suppose, of being able to tell them, and we've even saved up a little money to help get that launched. It's not a ton of money, it won't solve anything, but it will give us a much better picture on what the actual problem is and what the potential solutions are. Over that time period, I know Public Works and other members of council, but myself personally spoke with Laurel Templeton and her associates from Ritu to think about how best to go about figuring out what the answers were, even what the questions were of how to deal with the water that exists, the additional water that didn't exist when the system was designed, as Mr. Smith pointed out, and of course, the debris that comes down. And so, one of those two-year processes that could have and should have maybe happened faster, but we've done best we could with the resources available, and now the timing is right to be able to get the process started with Ritu and hand it off to the Stormwater Authority for a solution, hopefully in the not-too-distant future. I remember when citizens of the Graffius Run area, including Elmira Street, came in and asked us to do something and told us that the current system, even as it functions at its highest capacity under the leadership of Mr. Wright and Mr. Sillow, it just was not keeping up anymore and couldn't keep up. We promised that we would start working on it, and I think we've collectively kept our promise here, slower than we might like, but this is finally that important big first step to come up with a more permanent solution. So thank you to my colleagues on council, mayor and your administration, and Water and Sewer Authority and Ritu for collectively putting everyone's heads together to get to this point. If there are no other comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that resolution passes. I believe that that covers the vast majority of things that we have guests specifically here for on action items. So I'm going to return to the top of the agenda for an ordinance amending Article 511 in final reading. Mrs. Frank in short form, please.
An ordinance amending Article 511 of the city's codified ordinances, operation of vehicles.
Can I motion a second on the ordinance in final reading?
Go move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Greto.
I'm here. I was on the receiving line.
Oh, okay. I didn't see you coming out of the corner of my eye. I thought I'd stall, give you a little chance. I've gotten used to that with Mr. Nichols slow saunter up to the podium.
Yes, at the last meeting, council passed by resolution the bicycle map, and this is the first of two ordinances related to the bicycle, or the bike ordinance, making it consistent with the vehicle code. The next ordinance also amends the zoning map, providing for the design standards. They were legally advertised, and we received no adverse comments on the ordinance. So this is on final reading.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions on this ordinance in final reading? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the ordinance passes in final reading. Next item on the agenda is ordinance amending Article 1311 and 1379 in final reading. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
An ordinance amending Article 1311 and Article 1379 of the City of Williamsport codified ordinances.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second on this ordinance in final reading?
Go move. Second.
Hearing motion in a second. Mr. Greto, anything for that?
No, nothing more.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the ordinance in final reading, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that ordinance carries in final reading. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance establishing Article 1222 related to mobile food vendor in final reading. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
An ordinance of the City of Williamsport, Lycoming County, Pennsylvania, establishing Article 1122, mobile food vendor of the codified ordinances.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second on this ordinance in final reading?
Go move.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second. Mr. Nor, how are you this evening?
Good evening, President Williamson and members of city council. This is the second reading of the food truck ordinance. After the first reading, there were some corrections, some minor corrections that we did make. You do have that in front of you. I had no adverse comments or negative from the general public, so that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions on this in final reading? Mr. Noviello.
Gary, I noticed just in the last several days that we've also seen what I think most people would refer to as a hot dog cart. How does that factor into what we're doing here tonight?
Under the ordinance, that would fall under. It is a mobile food vendor. And that's what the ordinance really is, is a mobile food vendor, not a mobile truck. So that's why it's classified as such, and there is an explanation of that in the ordinance.
Okay. I want to make sure I had a few people asking just today, so...
And they do currently have a health license as well.
Thank you.
Just a process, to reclarification, I wasn't at the last meeting. The amendments that are reflected in the new item, do those need an amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so can I have a motion to amend the ordinance in final reading as distributed?
Go move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions on those amendments or anything you'd like to say, Mr. Nor?
The only thing I would like to add to it is, again, the ordinance will take effect in 20 days to the general public as well as we will reach out to the food vendors. That next Friday, they will be able to pick up the packets that are required to basically fill out in accordance to the ordinance, and in effective June 30th, they will be required to have that all submitted to us and pick up their permits at that point.
Thank you. Any, if there are no other comments on the amendment, Mrs. Frank on the amendment, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the amendment carries. We're back to the ordinance now as amended. Any comments or questions on the amended ordinance? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the amended ordinance in final reading, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that ordinance carries in final reading. Next item on the agenda is ordinance authorizing and directing a vote on the approval of a charter commission. Mrs. Frank, please.
An ordinance of the Council of the City of Williamsport, Lycoming County, Pennsylvania, authorizing and directing a vote on the approval of a charter commission and election of charter commission members to serve thereon. Continue.
Let's go ahead and read this, Paul.
Whereas this city is a municipality of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Commonwealth, and is a local government unit under provisions of the Act of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth, PACS 53, Chapter 80-82, as amended, reenacted, and supplemented from time to time. And whereas the city has authorized, approved, an election relative to a charter commission, an election of its members pursuant to the provisions of 53PS 41201, and whereas the Council of the City has determined that a vote regarding a charter commission is in the best interest of the city and its residents, and now therefore being enacted and ordained by the Council of the City as follows. The purpose of the ordinance is to authorize a vote related to the election of a charter commission, which shall be submitted, along with the below question, to the County Board of Elections, no later than five days after the passage of this ordinance. Number two, questions submitted for vote. Shall a charter commission of seven members be elected to study the charter and form of government of the City of Williamsport and to consider a new charter and to make recommendations thereon? Number three, the function and the duties. The function and the duties of the charter commission will be to study the form of government of the city, to compare it with the other available forms under the law of this Commonwealth, to determine whether it, in its judgment, the government of the city could be strengthened or made more clearly responsible or accountable to the people, or whether its operation could become more economic or efficient under a changed form of government. Number four, the proper officers of the city are hereby authorized and directed to execute, attest, and deliver any and all necessary or appropriate documents and do any and all necessary, whoops, do any and all necessary, appropriate, or desirable things in connection with the transactions hereby contemplated. All ordinances and resolutions or parts thereof, as far as the same, are inconsistent herewith, are repealed hereby. This ordinance shall become effective in accordance with the provisions of the Act.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance in first reading?
Go move.
Second.
Having a motion in a second. I'll present it. As Vice President Allison and I indicated at a press conference the other day, each of us, and in my conversations with most, if not all, of my colleagues, each of us have received questions, inquiries, queries about the form of government and whether alternative forms of government would best meet the needs of the city from a number of constituents over a period of years. I know in my case, those questions and those conversations predate my service on council, which now goes back, well, goes back to 2008. And so that's been a long time in which there have been discussions initiated by members of public, at least in the conversations to me, about our form of government. In fact, I think those conversations go back beyond my lifetime because, as was indicated, our form of government was established in 1972, but the original recommendation of the commission at that time actually was a different form of government, a council manager form of government, before the public then settled on the current form as a strong mayor form of government. So it's an issue that comes up periodically over periods of time. I think that those questions have grown to come more often, at least as people have brought them up with me, because they hear us in this chamber, on this television broadcast, talking about the ever-complex set of regulations that the city faces from several state and federal sources, the budget implications of all of the things that we talk about, the difficulties and the complexities of administering departments under the various requirements that they face, again, from state and federal sources, the challenges of a tax base and very tight constraints on the budget, and on and on and on. And the questions that have come to me at least have been, would we be best served by a model that is followed by most school districts, a model that has elected officials overseeing the administration, the professionally trained and experienced administration of school districts? Now, that, in the case of a city government, would come in the form of a council manager form of government. But I don't think you pick a form of government on the basis of questions or simply one parallel to a whole different type of government in a school district. Instead, what you do is you take deliberate steps to ensure that those questions are fully investigated, fully researched, answered in a transparent way involving as many people across the community as possible. So the step that Mr. Allison and I initiated by placing this ordinance on the agenda tonight for discussion was a step that essentially begins the process of engaging all of us, and by that I mean not just council, I mean all of us in the City of Williamsport, in a discussion about, one, whether we want to study those questions, the answers to those questions, and then, two, if we decide in November that we do want to study those questions and empowering, we would then be empowering a charter commission to study those questions over a period of nine months in, again, transparent way by people elected by the public to study those questions. That commission, if authorized and if elected, would, in those nine months, investigate everything possibly can. I would hope that they would have lots of public meetings for public input to talk about the four options allowed to us under the modified Third Class City Code, and then come up with a recommendation in that nine-month period that then, once again, the public could discuss, debate in an open, transparent way with everyone involved and, I hope, informed in that discussion. And ultimately, it would be the public that would make the decision on whether or not to adopt that recommendation made by that elected charter commission. It's not council's decision of what form of government we should take. It's not council's decision whether or not we should study the issue. It's not council's decision to choose a different form of government in any of the four options allowed to us under the Third Class City Code, modified Third Class City Code. It is simply a step that I'm, Mr. Allison and I hoped that council would consider tonight to whether or not to start the process so the public could make the decision. The first decision being, should we study this issue? And should we empower a charter commission of elected individuals, not us, to do the study? And I think the timing is right. The timing is right because we're facing ever-complex issues, and the timing is right because we find ourselves at a point in the current administration's time in office that is different than probably most points in time over the last 45 years. It is rare in which you have a mayor approaching the latter half of his third term, indicating in some instances that he did not intend to serve a third term, but I don't speak for him. He could choose to serve for a third term, but the time... to serve for a third term. But the timing here, which will take place over the next two years, would allow plenty of opportunity for the public to make its decision. And then if the public decided that this form of government will serve the next generation as well as it has the last couple, then there will be plenty of opportunity for him or other candidates for mayor to emerge and, and run for office. And so, we're not making a decision tonight or over the next two meetings about what form of government we should have. What we're making a decision for is whether or not we should initiate a transparent, fully engaged, fully informed public discussion about the very question itself. And so, that's my presentation with council. Mr. Allison had a family commitment this evening, something to really celebrate, a grandchild graduating from high school. He was not able to be here, but he asked me to read the following, and then I'll open it up for questions and discussion. This is from Mr. Allison. "President Williamson, fellow council members, administration and fellow citizens. I send my regrets that I'm not able to attend this evening's council meeting. Our oldest grandchild is graduating from Williamsport Area High School tonight, and we are attending that ceremony as our family celebrates her achievements to date and the transition to the next steps in her life. While there are many important items on the agenda tonight, there's only one that I believe requires a public comment from me to be read in my absence, and that is the ordinance approving a charter commission and election of commission members to study the charter and form of government for Williamsport and to consider a new charter and make recommendations regarding both. Being absent tonight prevents me from voting on the first reading of this very important ordinance, but I owe the people of Williamsport and my colleagues on council the courtesy of an explanation of my stance on this proposal. After much thought, discussion, and investigation, I have concluded that adopting this ordinance and putting it before the voters of Williamsport for their consideration at this time is the right thing to do." Excuse me, my mouth is dry. Notice that I'm not in, again, back to Mr. Allison, notice that I am not saying I'm in, I favor or oppose a change in our form of government. What I support is the process of an independent commission, elected by the voters, to investigate and study the issue openly and publicly, and then to make a recommendation based on their findings that would finally be voted up or down by the electorate. If it passes tonight and in two weeks on second reading, there is more than enough time for every citizen to become informed on the subject, discuss it with others, including your elected officials, and, and formulate an opinion either for or against before the November election, which is when this question, question would be on the ballot. I believe council will do its part to dispense facts and information and facilitate town-meeting-type forums for discussion. We should not fear the opportunity to investigate and gather information on the issue of what form of local government may best, may work best for Williamsport, whether it leads to a change or confirms keeping things the way they are. After serving seven and a half years on council and observing firsthand the operation of city government in all its facets and functions, and the ever increasing, ever increasing complexity of efficiently and effectively running an entity of this size, I can honestly say, I think it is time to do this study. I thank God, we have the freedom in this country to talk openly about issues like this, discuss and debate them, and then exercise our right under law to make the final decision about how we are governed. I am hopeful of at least two, I'm hopeful of at least two things occurring if this ordinance is passed, regardless of the final outcome. One is that if we go through this process, we will all learn more about government at the local level. The successes and failures of, that others have experienced, the possible ways of making our present form of government work better now, and maybe some ideas for our state legislators on some things that can change in the state code governing third-class city governments, are all some, but not, are all some, but obviously not all, of the positive results that could come out of this, both through the commission study and also through citizen involvement. We live in a time of increasing dissatisfaction and divisiveness across almost the entire spectrum of political parties and philosophies. My second hope is that we will take advantage of this present opportunity to have a local conversation in a way and a manner that will transcend the issue itself. In the event this ordinance passes, we will need to take time to discuss with and actually listen to each other with, with respect and consideration, and resist the temptation to demonize or demean some person or group or the opinion they hold because it is different than the one we may have formed. We can reap the benefits of communication and cooperation going forward regardless of the decision that is made by the voters on the ballot question itself. Finally, this is a decision not to be made or taken lightly. To change the form of government is a serious matter with consequences, some of which can be known and others that will invariably arise from the unknown. I don't think it's too much of a stretch, though, to remind ourselves that this nation was founded upon ideas and principles and a fervent desire of the populace to be self-governed and make their own decisions regarding what form that government would take. So, in some respects, we are participating in that grand process on our own local scale. Borrowing a phrase created by others, I can say I am Williamsport proud, and I truly believe that together we can accomplish some great and worthwhile, even amazing, things in this city that will benefit not just us now, but those who will call Williamsport home in the years to come. Thank you, Randy." So, he thanks you for allowing him to have that read. With that, I will open it up for comments or questions from my colleagues on council. Mr. Noviello?
You know, I can't speak to the conversations that others have had about this issue, but the conversations that I've had regarding such a proposal have been rather numerous and with a rather wide variety of individuals and over several years of time now. This isn't something that just popped up or dropped down from Pluto. We've been dealing with this for some time, at least in casual and private conversations. And I think that due to that, we bring this question to the voters. Where else would we take it? I don't, I can't imagine where else we would take it. In the form of a referendum, which in my mind, in my estimation, is probably the truest form of democracy that we have available to us today, particularly within a federal republic with a representative type of a construct. So, voting on an issue, again, is a true form of democracy. Voters don't often get the chance to reevaluate their means of representation, nor on average do they get the chance to often directly vote on an issue placed on the ballot. In this particular case, they get both, and we should celebrate that. At, at the least, it opens up the door to further discussion, which is never harmful and will always be enlightening. People will get the opportunity to choose their own form of representation. And to quell some other concerns that might have popped up, at least, again, those that I've had the means of talking about and speaking to people with, this issue would have been brought to the public, I think, regardless of who might be sitting in the mayor's seat. This has been in discussion, again, as I said, for several years now. It has nothing to do with any particular individual character and everything to do with giving voters a chance to discuss and decide the issue for themselves. So, that in itself, in my mind, is, is the paramount component of all of this, the, the true form of democracy. We've given and we will provide numerous opportunities in the future for people to come to open discussions and, and, and get their two cents worth put in, not unlike we saw earlier here this evening, where people began to express some thoughts and ideas about this already. So, we, we know that, I think the community is ripe for such a discussion. Whether it's ripe to make this change or not, we're, we're yet to see. And, and that's why exactly we're taking this to the voters themselves, to let them have a voice in their representation, hope, rather than hoping that whoever they have elected into office will somehow follow their thoughts and their guidelines as they go through their tenure in those elected seats. Here now, we take the pressure in, to an extent, off of us and, and kind of give it back to the people who feel the, the need to address this in a public fashion and in public forum. And I'm hoping for that. I'm hoping that the public forums that we have draw a great number of people. I hope the commentaries are, are, are long. They really should be. This is important business. And, again, for people to be able to get up and have a voice in exactly how they will be represented is something that quite frankly doesn't happen that often. So, this is a rare occasion and a rare opportunity, and I have faith enough in the voting public to, to go with what they decide. So, I guess that's how I'll end my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Noviello. Other comments or questions from members of council? Mrs. Katz?
I, I prepared this for past couple of days. First of all, my husband and I have had conversations with so many people about a city manager for about 17 years, and that is what it was, passionate conversations for some of the people with little research or knowledge. Looking back, the main reason a majority of people wanted a city manager was because they wanted our city to be run like a business. Even I made that statement when I first ran for council. I stated that if I ran my business like the city, I would be out of business. Boy, how wrong I was. When you start working on council, you quickly discover how and why everything moves slowly. As an example, a couple of weeks ago, the Sun Gazette had an editorial about the flute trucks. They were happy at how and what we came up with. Their only criticism was that it should have happened sooner. No one realizes that the ordinance started over a year ago. The point I'm making is, even if we have a city manager, things will not move any quicker. With this ordinance comes a lot of questions. First, we are starting with a commission to look into change. We are giving our citizens the opportunity to select a new form of government. They will be given four choices. I think this is a huge challenge for anyone. It's hard enough making an either-or choice, but four is going to be difficult. Number one, the commission form of government, we had, we had this form of government before 1972. It would be really challenging to go back to that form. Number two, council city manager. With this, you go through the process of having a charter elected, to go through the interviewing process, and from what I understand, council will then do the hiring. This is where I feel very uncomfortable. Council could have a turnaround of new people every two years during elections, whereas the manager is constant. How challenging is that if you have elected officials overseeing someone who, who was hired by previous council members? The other problem is the cost. It will cost the taxpayers a lot more money to hire a city manager than an elected mayor. And if the manager does not work out, the whole process starts all over. Also, there will be seven bosses for the manager. This can become an issue, especially with newly-elected council members. Number three, mayor council. This has been in effect in our city since 1972. Your mayor is elected by the people as well as city council. Council is legislative and mayor is administrative. We do have checks and balances, and as far as trying to keep up with the running of the city. Number four choice that we have is a weak mayor and council. I don't think there is any need to discuss this one. This proposed ordinance will have to come with a lot of information for the voting public. What was described so far is far from sufficient for the voters to make an educated decision. We should provide the voters with many pages of detailed information about how each form of government works. We cannot expect them to Google what kind of government should third-class cities have and read all the stuff that's there. Of the 53 third-class cities, the state, in the state of Pennsylvania, the larger populations have either a mayor council or a council manager. The, the majority leaning towards mayor council. This took me hours and hours of research to find these facts and more that I don't even want to take the time to discuss tonight. As I just stated, the voter and taxpayers of Williamsport need a lot more information than what has been presented so far. This ordinance, as it reads, is to vote on the approval of a charter commission and an election of charter commission members. The voters need to know if these changes are good, bad, in their minds, before they vote for a charter commission to be elected. There will also be a lot of work for all to make sure that if the charter commission is voted yes by the voters, the information and facts set forth by the commission are fair and balanced. As they say in Congress, I didn't have time to read the 2,000-page ordinance before I voted. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Smith?
What I'm hearing tonight is pretty much what I've experienced over the last few years. Based on the complexities of city government today, and you've heard some of these tonight that we've gone through, I think every person sitting here on council has spent an enormous amount of time in their committees to ensure that the city is being run properly with its dollars. And yes, council does have the charge of handling the budget and the financing. Along with what Mrs. Katz said, I come from the business world, the corporate world, and every few years, we have to take a look at what are we doing right and what are we doing wrong? Should we make some changes? When you look at the city as a business, we are seeing, in some cases, tax revenue decreasing. We have seen our population decreasing over a number of years compared to what it was 25, 30, 40, 50 years ago. We look at pensions for the future. We look at what's next that the federal and state government are going to come down with regulations that we're going to have to deal with. Increasing budgets, increasing costs, but yet when we look at our revenue stream, where is that? Where is the revenue stream compared to the expenses? And I, I don't have statistics from the previous years, but I know since I've been on council, and correct me if I'm wrong here, this will be the smallest surplus that we've had in many years. Is that correct, Dr. Williamson?
I think you're right.
That's a little bit frightening.
Absolutely.
You've heard me say from this position that there are certain areas that I, I'm not going to go into tonight that we should be spending more money on. When we look at our unions, you know, these folks, they obtain raises. They obtain more benefits. Do we want to go to arbitration and be looking at five figures to fight an arbitration? You know, there's a lot of complex issues, and I think all of us that have been on councils are seeing this from the time that we started until now, the large number of issues that we've got to deal with. And yes, we are in good financial condition. Many, many other cities are not, but how long are we going to be? I don't know. I can't sit here and give a number. I don't think anybody can give a number. We don't know that. But we also know that Graffius Run is going to cost us a lot of money. The levy remediation, you know, we're up to $10 million. That's a lot of money. Where's it going to come from? As I pointed out, every few years, businesses take a look at where they're at. If we were running this as a corporate business and we see our revenue stream dropping, we see expenses going up, what you have to do is to take a look and say, what do we need to do better? And this is kind of what we're doing here. We're asking to take a look. Is there a way to do it better, or are we doing it the best way there is? And I, I think all of us are in that position. We're, we're not here making accusations. We're not here saying that one way is better than the other. We're saying it's time to take a look. Is there a better way? And there may not be a better way. But I think by doing nothing, we're standing still, and we're not giving our taxpayers and our residents the opportunity, which is what they're going to have. They're going to have the opportunity to ask questions. They're going to have the opportunity to give opinions, and ultimately, they'll be the one to vote. And I don't think that there's, I can't speak for the other six, but I, I just have a suspicion that none of us really are in concrete saying this is the way it's got to be, and that's the way we've got to go. What we are saying, though, is, should we provide the conduit for that study and let the taxpayers, the voters, make that decision? And again, this isn't something that's come up in the last six months, a year, two years. I can remember, as a resident of the city, being born and raised in the city, the, the various types of government. I can remember in the 1960s, when each councilperson had a department, and they ran that department. They made the decisions for that department. Some had public safety, some had public works, fine- Some had public safety, some had public works, finance, and other areas. I, I don't recall at that time, I was, I was just a child. I don't recall whether it worked, it didn't work, or why it was changed. I don't know that. The only thing I do know is, coming from the corporate world, you've got to look at your business every so many years and reevaluate. Do I need to get into another type of business to bring in more income? Do I have to cut expenses? Well, we've already gone that route. We, as council, know what the expenses are and how far we can cut them. You know, we're about to the point where we can't cut any more legitimate expenses. We can't cut more people. That's not going to work. We took a look at that in the past. It's not going to work. We didn't go there. But yet, when we look, we've hired a full-time IT person now, which we've had to do, to keep up with technology. We have a full-time electrician, which has saved us money. We made the right decision there. But we don't know what other technology is going to come out and what we're going to have to spend those dollars on. That's constantly changing. And maybe we need to look at someone as a CEO that has credentials, that has, uh, credentialed by colleges, that specify that the folks receiving a degree have shown that they are educated in how to operate a city, the various dealings I have to do with unions, workers. I'm certain they have HR courses and a lot of other courses to train these folks. And then you look for someone, if, if you go that route, you look for someone with experience. You know, someone that has been somewhere. I know that when I read the newspaper, I read the news in Lock Haven and Lock Haven. Again, I'm not saying positive or negative. I'm just stating that you read about the city manager, what decisions have been made there, and how council interacts with that. So I guess from my perspective, without spending any more time on it, I, I think it's, it's time that we provide the conduit and then let those folks that are out there, the voters, make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from members of council? Ms. Mealy?
Um, I, I feel as though I've heard a lot of really excellent commentary this evening, and clearly, I, I think perhaps more than anything, what's striking to me is how much, precisely how much thought everyone else who's spoken has, has put into this, this question and this particular item on our agenda, and that on a, on a loaded agenda, that frankly, there were a number of items deserving of a lot of attention. And I hope that I can, that I can add something small to that, but, but, but thank you, folks, because we've, it, it's good to know that we think deeply before we make decisions like this. And, and the one other thing that I'm hearing from all of us is that, is that we've all thought about this particular question, this particular ballot question differently, and we've all come to whatever conclusion we will vote with this evening in, in a different fashion. But, but most of those streams of thought have been initiated by questions from our constituents, and, and I would, I would say that as well. And I've gotten questions from constituents that, that sort of, that, that run the political spectrum as well. How, how is, how is Williamsport functioning? How can we function better? And, and in the end, I think that by opening up this exceptionally long and deliberate process of examining form of government, council is making it possible for the citizens of Williamsport to participate in their own small chunk of democracy and, and question some of the basic tenets of our community. And I, and I think, as they say, the unexamined life is, is not worth living, and I think to a certain extent, also within a community, if, if you're not constantly thinking about the institutions that you rely on and that you hold dear and the way in which your community is run, then you are not, you are not getting the best that you can out of, out of your community and out of your government. And so, we've arrived at a, at a very special moment where we not only have a good opportunity to, as apolitically as possible, initiate a question that allows us to examine our, our form of government, but we also see both on a national and a local level, increases in regulations, increasing complexities of, of governments, and an increasingly unstable political climate that I think contribute to us perhaps wanting to reevaluate how we run our city and, and whether or not our form of government is best suited to take us into the next millennium. Consequently, I, I'm exceptionally grateful, I think, that I am, am, can be a part of a council that, that brings this question once before, once again before the population, as, as I hope that we will this evening, and, and allows the voters to potentially initiate the, the rather long process that might help us establish either a new form of government or reinforce the form of government that we currently have. And just as one quick thing, I'm, as, as one quick two-part thing, this is a very long process. This is not something simple, and it's not something easy to understand, either for council, for perhaps our solicitors, and certainly not for the average Williamsport voter. We will put a question on the ballot in, if, if we, if we vote in the affirmative tonight, we will put a question on the ballot in November of 2017 that asks the voters if we should elect an unpaid commission that will, that will serve and, and spend nine months deliberating on which form of government would best serve the city. The commission will then make a recommendation. Their recommendation will appear on the ballot in November of 2018. The voters will be asked whether or not to accept that recommendation, and then potentially the city would change its form of government. It's, it's a process, in other words, that will, that will last us a minimum of 16 months. And, and until the change itself would be initiated, if there were a change recommended, we'd be looking at perhaps as much as two or three years. This is not something, A, that one undertakes lightly, but B, that one undertakes quickly, or that anyone in particular can, can call. This, this is not council pushing its will upon the people. This is council hoping that people take this opportunity to exert their own will and, and to, and to make a decision for their community, a very, to actively make a decision within their community that will determine how we, how we live within Williamsport, perhaps for the next several decades, or perhaps even longer. And with that said, if council does choose this evening to initiate this process, I would call upon all of us to do everything that we can to help clarify the process and the, the questions within it for everyone that we encounter in our daily lives and in our jobs as council people. Because if, if we don't do that, then we're not, we're not helping the voters of Williamsport to go into that election booth in November as informed as they could be, and we're not, we're not enabling the best possible discussion of, of where the city stands and where we can stand. Thank you very much.
Mr. Henderson? I'm assuming?
I guess I have to say something, don't I?
You don't have to.
You can always say ditto.
This is a heavy question, and this is not something you just, you know, you just say, oh, yeah, sure, yes or no. It's just not that type of a question. In fact, it's so heavy that we're, you know, we're thinking about this, we're, we're trying to say yes or no, whether or not to talk about changing government. You know, we're not talking about the question of actually changing. The question here is, do we bring this up for discussion? And do we pose this to our, to the voters of Williamsport? And this is, this is a big, big issue, and it is not one that we take lightly, certainly. You know, I, I have felt the, the stress and the weight of this decision in this past week, and, and there are a lot of things going through my mind. We cannot make decisions based on our emotions. We cannot make decisions based on personalities. We cannot make decisions based on a fear of the future, you know, what's going to happen? Well, that may enter the conversation, but that can't be the basis of our decisions. We can't, we can't make decisions based on just memories of the good old days either, you know, because times are changing. And so, we have to consider this seriously. This question, should this ordinance pass, this question that would be on the ballot is, again, not to change the form of government, but it is to discuss it further. That's the question. If we initiate the conversation here, voters have the option to shut down the conversation in November and say, we don't want that. Great. I'm more comfortable with the voters shutting down the conversation than with me shutting down the conversation. That's how I feel on this. The, the commission, if, if the question is voted yes, and there is a commission appointed, the duties of the commission are to determine whether or not the government of this city can be strengthened, whether or not it can be made more clearly responsible or accountable to the people, and whether or not its operation could become more economic or efficient. In order for me to vote no on this ordinance, I must be so convinced that this government cannot be strengthened and that it cannot be more clearly accountable to the people and that it cannot be more economic and more efficient. I have to be so convinced that it can't be better, that I would say, this does not need to go to the voters. That's pretty heavy. I don't know that I can say that. How I will vote in November, I'm not sure. But right now, I feel that I have to allow the voters to have this decision. And, and I don't feel it is within my authority, my power, or it should be, to, to just shut it down and say, well, I know you want to talk about it, but I don't think we should anymore. And I know it's a simplistic view, because it's much more complicated than that, but those are the principles that guide my decision tonight. It's heavy. It's difficult. And so, I, I think we can trust the voters of this city to make a good decision on whether or not we should continue this conversation and whether we, we pursue this or not. So that's, that's my thoughts, and that's my standard.
Thank you very much. I, I want to join in what Ms. Mealy said in terms of thanks for the depth of the conversation that I've had with each of you and, and, and that we've had to hear tonight in terms of, of, you know, the, the issues in deciding this specific question, right? We are not at all deciding what form of government we should decide. No. And, and by the way, I would agree with what Mrs. Katz said, and, and I think it was either Ms. Novial or Mr. Smith. I don't know that another form is better. I don't, I don't have the information to know, but what I do feel like needs to happen is maybe one step beyond what you just said. I, I think you're right. To me, putting it in the hands of the public to make a decision on whether we should study the question is the right thing to do. But I'd go one step further. To be able to know, I, I want to, I want somebody to be in charge of the in-depth analysis that Mrs. Katz pointed out that we don't have. I don't have either. The in-depth analysis of the, the pros and the cons, the, the, the costs and the benefits, the, the merits and the drawbacks of each of those four that Mrs. Katz listed. And, and it is not, we've been reading state statute, we've been reading third-class city code and, and thinking through all of this, and it is not our responsibility, nor should it be, to do all of that research. Instead, as I think Mrs. Katz, or Ms. Katz, or Mrs., whatever, Ms. Mealy said, pointing the wrong ways, looking that way, pointing that way, what Ms. Mealy said, you want to put it in an independent body's hands that is elected by the people, chosen by the people themselves, so that there's some independence outside the political process, that they would be conscientious, deliberate, thorough, and, and what I hope, very, very, very transparent. So that we do, assuming all of the steps would be followed in the affirmative up to that point, so that in nine months into 2018, they have a recommendation and a rationale. Because if that all were to happen, and in the fall of November, their recommendation and their rationale is either poorly done or is well-done and the whole community is informed well enough to either agree or disagree with their conclusions, then, then we will have initiated a, a very useful process for reasons that all of you listed. So, starting the process, I think, is the right way to go, because ultimately, it shouldn't be, and it won't be, our decision after these first two readings, to put it into the hands of public and let the public temporarily at least put it in the hands of an independent, unpaid, elected commission to make a recommendation, and then the public will decide whether or not to adopt that recommendation. All of that, to me, makes sense, and the timing also makes sense for reasons that you've all listed. Are there other comments or questions?
Just a, a question. Let's, let's imagine that we vote yes tonight. This question is on the ballot in November.
Mm-hmm. And we'd need to vote yes again in two weeks, by the way.
Correct.
Right?
Correct. Thank you. And then the commission would also be appointed on that same ballot.
And I would use the word elected.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, they would have nine months.
Correct.
They would state their findings.
Correct.
Then we would vote again in the-
The public would vote again.
Correct.
Right?
The public, and I include myself in that.
Sure.
Uh, the public would vote again in November of that year. That would be-
2018.
2018.
Correct.
Then there would be a, a year before the new form of government if the public votes yes.
I believe that that is allowed. It would have to also be part of the recommendation and the vote by the public of when the new timeframe would take, the new form would take in place, if all of what you said ended up being the sequence of events. I believe that is allowed. They could choose a different timeframe to recommend, and the public could vote on the different timeframe. But as the, as Mr. Allison and I outlined when we announced the agenda item, that's our contemplated timeframe, so that the new form would coincide with the, the end of the current administrative term.
Correct. So that if the public votes no-
Correct.
-in 2018, there is still a year to continue our normal political process, an election process, for a new mayor.
Right. And, and from what I've seen-
For the reelection of the, of the current.
And from what I've seen in, in past cycles, oftentimes what you see are candidates for mayor announcing after the even-numbered election, so after November 18, so December, November, December, January. They circulate petitions like normal in February-ish, the primaries held in May-ish, and then an election for mayor, if there's no change, would occur as is scheduled now in the fall of 19.
All right. And that would be my concern, or, or my, you know, question, my desire, is that should this get all the way to that point and then be voted no, that there is ample time to, to run elections and, you know, campaigns.
Right.
So that our, our form of government continues without interruption.
Right. And that, that's an important part of the rationale of the timing.
Yes.
Of, of why now? Because if you did it earlier in the cycle, or later in the cycle, you either would have, you would disrupt a current administrative term, or if you did it later, you wouldn't have time to complete the process before starting- have time to complete the process before starting a new administrative term. And then, as I indicated earlier, usually you have a clear indication of, very early on, of a sitting mayor intending to run for reelection, or new candidates for mayor already announced. So the timing here, sort of mid-term of, of the third term, really, of the current administration, is rare, and I, I think a perfect time to, to open the discussion, should we further open the discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank on the ordinance in first reading, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
No.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the ordinance carries in first reading five to one. Next item on the agenda is ordinance adopting a six-year capital budget project in first reading. What, do you want to read the whole thing? Or short form? Mrs. Frank, short form, please.
An ordinance, an ordinance adopting a six-year capital budgets project for the City of Williamsport for fiscal years ending June 30, 2018 to June 30, 2023.
Can I motion in a second on the ordinance in first reading, please?
No, I'll move.
Second.
Here, motion second. Mr. Nichols, how are you this evening?
Good evening, President Williamson, members of council. I'm just waking up, sorry. No. Any questions? No. Anyway, the ordinance in front of you is to adopt a proposed six-year capital program for the City Williamsport, and essentially, this document serves a planning tool for the city with the first two years being structured more as a action plan, and this programming document is one of three steps in the consideration of a city capital project. The second step is the, to budget a particular project as part of the city's annual budget, and the third step is then the actual award of a contract after funds are secured. Also, as noted in the city's administrative code, the program is a living document which is subject to any revisions by the administration and council. Also, this document serves as an important part of RVT's capital process and meets regulatory requirements related to PNDAS Capital Planning Program, as well as the FTA. This brings you to the ordinance before you, and there are four sections to the report. First section is the status report for the current year, and it gives you an update as to where we are with current projects, and whether they have been completed, rescheduled, or in progress. The second section is the proposed capital projects budget by department, and gives you a look at the six-year timeframe for the various projects that each city department contemplates. And then the next section gives you more detail on potential funding sources, and the last section gives you narratives from the particular departments to describe just what they are proposing as part of their six-year program. I should mention, the next Monday, the planning commissioner will be reviewing this document, and they will provide you with a recommendation. If necessary, the finance committee also will have a second opportunity to review the program before the next council meeting, which will be the second reading of the ordinance. And, and then the, again, at the next meeting, the second reading will be the final reading to approve the document before you. The total six-year capital program is approximately $79 million. However, again, the first two years of program project, the city is prioritizing for possible funding and implementation. So I'm just going to go through the second section of the report and just focus on the first two years, which is more or, more or less the action plan, or ones that are the priorities of the city and the administration, and, and then the, mention a couple things about the out-years or years three, four, five, and six for projects that are significant interest. So starting on page one in the second section, you'll see that a paving program, which is budgeted of approximately $1,576,000 for the first two years, and then the continuation of the Brick Street Rehabilitation Project. Also, you'll see that there's a continuation of the Pathway to Health Project, and that's budgeted as $1,250,000 in year one. And I might add, this is a success story of the administration and Mr. Grado, because that is the last part of the Pathway to Health four-phase project. So congratulations to Mr. Grado for making it through the finality of that particular project. So as he ages, he'll have, go along that Pathway to Health to, never mind.
I just wish, when he had started the project, he had told us that he was aiming at finishing coincident with retirement.
Well, I don't think he's going to quite make that, but, but it's on the radar. $750,000 budget for work associated with storm sewers, pump stations, drainage structures, including improvements for Graffius Run, which we've been discussing. The first two years, we have $1,500,000 being programmed for potential levy improvements. As you know, there's $500,000 set aside in a borrowing for investment in the levy improvements. However, it remains to be seen whether or not, though, that particular investment will be made by the city or the new potential Stormwater Authority. On page two, $330,000 budget for public services equipment and facility roof replacement projects, and this was a study we did some time ago, identified that we have eighty-some roofs in, in city properties, and, and so we try to attend to those roofs each year. There's a budget of $950,000 upgrade city facilities related to recreation, primarily Brandon Park, tennis courts in particular, and then there's ongoing maintenance for Bowman Field at $25,000 each year. On page three, the proposed Public Safety Department budget for the first year provides for the purchase of three police cars each year, an amount of $348,000, a continuation of video surveillance system for $350,000, with the proposed funding coming from the federal government. Similar to what we did in the first phase, successfully completed by the city and with a partnership of city councils, a public safety committee. And year three, a budget is shown for the possibility of a new public safety building. Again, this is sort of, not in the action plan, but it's, it's still conceptually, it's out there. I'm not sure, you know, just, you know, how that will be continued, but as part of the capital plan. Under the codes department, $60,000 budget for vehicles and equipment, with $17,500 for GIS program upgrade in the out-years. Fire department capital project budget includes $565,000 for new pumper in year three, $60,000 facility improvements, as well as budget for support vehicles, breathing apparatus, and computer software, $30,000 budget for the upgrade of two fire hydrants and laterals. Then on page four, under general government, there is a budget of $5,321,000 for the East Third Street Gateway Revitalization Project, which would be scheduled, as indicated in the Section One status reports, and we did present in front of URC, you know, the, the financing strategy for that particular project, which was, is now, the foundation to this whole strategy is a successful grant from the First Community Foundation for a million dollars to both, like, coming college and the city. So we did receive one multimodal grant, so we are on our way to successfully implementing, initiating that particular project. Also, under general government, there's funding for support equipment, MIS upgrades network control systems, and city hall renovations. The city hall renovation project, it shows that we completed $50,000, of the $500,000 has been allocated in the financing, and that strategy needs to be completed in terms of just whether, you know, there are upgrades to this particular structure, or, you know, other opportunities. Then also, in, under transportation, River Valley Transit's programming, $5,100,000 for purchase of eight CNG replacement buses over the next two years. And in my, in addition to the vehicles that are now in order, and these eight particular vehicles, four of which we are, we will be successfully receiving another grant for four vehicles for next year, and once we get the other four in, in year two, we will pretty much have completed our conversion of CNG, which is about two or three years faster than, than I ever thought would happen. $125,000 to purchase support vehicles, $350,000 for spare component support equipment, $2 million for River Valley Transit's Economic Development Projects, which also ties into the East Third Street Revitalization Project. There's an additional $3,225,000, and those are just for certain elements of the East Third Street Revitalization Project, which are ones, the Russell Lynn Heritage Park, the, the Porro Possibility, Streetscape, which are typically projects RVT, you know, leads, leads the charge on. So we sort of separated different components into the city budget and the RVT budget. So the budget for the first two years, the overall program is approximately $26 million, which funding sources are primarily, as in the past, specified as coming, various federal and state grant sources, River Valley Transit, other local sources, like the First Community Foundation of Pennsylvania. Department here, we have all departments here, heads here tonight that are, that are jumping at the chance to come up here and explain their projects in, in detail, and so, and answer any questions, and we're asking for your approval on first reading.
Thank you. And this was reviewed by the finance committee?
Yes.
Yes.
And Public Works.
And Public Works.
No. No, we worked.
No, just the finance.
Well-
Public Works got really lucky this week.
Counselors Smith and I had coffee, and we discussed it. Is that close enough?
No.
No.
Ms. Mealy.
This was reviewed by the finance committee and forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. Most of the discussions centered on specific items within the text, and I believe actually that Mr. Pavlock and Mr. Nichols said that they would request that Mr. Ray from the IT Department be here for one of the two readings of this ordinance, merely because there are a number of IT-generated items of relatively small dollar amounts, but nonetheless measurable on the, on the capital budget, and finance had some questions about those items that, that Nichols and Pavlock could not address. So we'll, we'll hopefully see Mr. Ray two weeks from now to, to answer some of those queries. A few other notes, you will see on page four of the second segment of the capital budget that city hall office renovations for $450,000 are in the 2017, 2018 capital budget. The reason for that, as Mr. Nichols mentioned, is that there is a two-year drawdown on that money that we borrowed to do some renovations to city hall, and that means that the expenditures have to be not only authorized, but actually expended by the end of 2018. The money has to be, has to be spent.
In other words, the money disappears.
Yes.
Goes away.
Consequently, we've, we've been having lengthy discussions amongst council and the administration regarding public safety building, various and sundry sort of permutations of city government, and I think we've arrived more or less at the conclusion of those, but we do need to bear in mind that we have a December 2018 deadline for making expenditures from that particular line of credit on city hall. Let me see. As, as we usually note about the capital budget, most of this is wish list items. A lot of it, especially the items further into the out-years, will, will likely not happen. And in fact, as we see in the first section of the capital budget, we had several items that were projected in the capital budget for this year that are in fact rescheduled for other, for other years. Regarding that, Mr. Nichols, Ways Garden, we had a discussion about it at finance, and I'm not sure what the resolution was. The $150,000 that was in the capital budget for Ways Garden this year was rescheduled, but Ways Garden does not appear in the capital budget for next year, or any, it, it doesn't appear in the, in the six-year capital budget moving forward.
Right. I, yeah, I didn't really have time to get that updated, but we'll, we'll provide you with the updated page that shows that-
Okay.
-in terms of Ways Garden, by the next second reading of the ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, that was just one. We, we, we do have a substantial amount of money set aside to do some work in Ways Garden, and of course, we don't want to lose that between one capital budget and the next. So, let me just see what other small notes there were. All in all, there's, there are some exciting, exciting projects and some much-needed projects in the capital budget. It is, of course, up to the administration and council to work together to try to make sure that the ones that are most necessary come to pass and, and don't simply become another item that gets pushed back year over year. We, we have seen, I think, that the Graffius Run sort of finally made it into, into the end queue, and, and hopefully we can do that for, for other projects in this capital budget as well.
Thank you. Comments or questions to members of council? The one thing that I'd ask Mr. Nichols for you to work on for the second reading, probably with finance or, and Public Works for that matter, on page three of the second section, as we have for many years, I think, we've included a line item for a public safety building in an out-year. And as you know from your discussions with finance, council has been working deliberately over the past year, year and a half, to think through exactly the, how to best meet the needs of this facility, as we were just talking about with city hall, and the other public safety buildings across the city. And while I, I don't want to go into the summary of all the details of what we've concluded and, and ultimately what we've decided to act upon, I think, in summary, the conclusion is that we can meet the needs of, of the structures, the edifices of city government within the current building structure in terms of maintenance, some of which have been long deferred, at a much lower cost, with a high level of service in the existing buildings here and at the fire headquarters and at Rikerd Avenue and, and other facilities, with investing, without the, without putting $12 million into a new building. We can talk later about the rationale behind all of that, both with you and, and with the public, but I, I'm pretty sure that that is the conclusion of the lots of conversations and a lot of hard work put in by members of the administration and members of city council. So, in it, my suggestion would be, in addition to showing the $450,000 of city hall office renovation budget in 2017, that we might find a reasonable number, it won't be an exact number, but we've got pretty good estimates at this point, of additional money to be put into public safety buildings in, in, say, the first three years, 27 through, 17 through 20, as a tentative plan to both upgrade this building and our other facilities across the city, in particular for public safety, given the, given the results of that work and those studies. I.e., we can reduce the sum total by $12 million and then add in the much smaller numbers that will get us where we need to go as a result of that work. I think that'll more accurately reflect the, the effort that we've all put into together over the last sixteen months or so.
Is that a recommendation to come out of the public safety committee, or before the next reading?
It's really a conclusion of a lot of people's work, including some of the stuff that, you know, that we did with Tony Visco and with Larson Design, and so we can try to summarize offline the kind of, the rough dollar amounts that we come up with. I'd suggest that maybe you just, in the meantime, talk to Liz and Skip, and they can give you the ballpark figures, at least useful for this purpose.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's basically, you know, we know that the number for this building is a little bit more than 450. We know that the building, the amount, and I can't remember off the top of my head, the amounts for fire headquarters, chief might be able to tell you too, are, are a ballpark figure, and, and then the other facilities are another ballpark figure. And thank goodness, the number is less than 12 million.
Okay.
By a lot, so.
Yeah. I'd say, wait, I'd say, yeah, a lot less.
And, 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 you know, it was, it was a, a long process. I mean, you were involved in, in chunks of it along the way, and, and we took our time, and, and we were careful about considering a wide variety of options, and a lot of man-hours and woman-hours went into that process. And so, to the degree this recommends, or this reflects the latest thinking of, of what we'd like to see and do in the future, you know, that change probably would be a good update compared to what we usually do, which is just put through $12 million some, someday in the future and hope we get there.
Well, it's meant to be the guiding document to the next step, so.
So it'd be good, I mean, that's just the one update that I saw that would be useful going forward. Okay. If there are any other comments or questions, Mr. Smith?
Just one. The public safety committee, and we've had, in, I want to say, the last six or eight months, we've had a couple of work sessions with the chief and his staff concerning, if we didn't go with public safety building, what, what do you need? And they have discussed that with us, and we're going to have another work session in the next couple of weeks to solidify that. the next couple of weeks to solidify that. And in view of what we have talked about here at City Hall with some possibilities that can also meet, we feel, what the Fire Department is going to be looking at to serve their needs, based on what we found with Mr. Visco's report.
Right.
So, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be talking about this and getting some concrete numbers.
And, and for now, you know, putting a ballpark figure of, you know, what we've heard.
Right.
Through those discussions and the big picture, I think, between City Hall and the other facilities, I, if I remember correctly, we're talking in a tune of a million or less, which is a whole lot less than 12 million, so.
And now we'll meet the needs from what we're hearing now in discussions with the Fire Department of what they're going to need. So, Ms. Mealy and the Public Safety, we can, we can discuss this and go over it and come up with some numbers.
Sounds great.
Well, when I took the latest drawings of the Chief's suite of offices, and our construction manager did come up to $12 million, but maybe we need to.
Was that for the second floor of the Taj Mahal over on Third Street?
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing that, Mrs. Frank on the ordinance in first reading, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes. And the ordinance has been approved in first reading. Next item on the agenda is resolution for Bowman Field use agreements. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for the use of B and B, BB and T Ballpark at Historic Bowman Field, be hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Williamsport that the following use of BB and T Ballpark at Historic Bowman Field be permitted for 2017 and authorizing the mayor and city controller to execute an agreement with Major League Baseball Properties, Inc. and Cutting Edge Baseball LLC for Major League Little League Classic.
Thank you. Can I motion a second to approve this resolution?
I'll move.
Second.
Can you motion a second, Mr. Nichols?
Thank you again.
Is this a standard?
This is a standard Bowman Field lease agreement for use of the facility on August 20th by MLB, Major League Baseball for the MLB Little League Classic. Usually you see these agreements before or after the cross cutter season, but this is during, so we added them to the lease agreement. And the terms and conditions are similar to previous lease agreements, and MLB will be reimbursing the city for all expenses incurred, the cross gutters, a couple nuances of the cross gutters, you have the rights to the concessions, and MLB has the rights to advertising, and both MLB and the cross gutters are responsible for maintenance for that particular event. Public Works and Finance did review this and recommended the agreement, so I defer back to the chair.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mealy from Finance, please.
Finance did review this agreement, and everything would appear to be in order. We know, obviously, that the, the contribution per this agreement from Major League Baseball is, of course, nominal, to say the least. I believe, in fact, I sort of expected that they were, that, that they fell into the category of concert or special event, but Mr. Nichols tells me they actually fall into the category of ballgame. So, which makes perfect sense, meaning, meaning that I think that the total fee for, for MLB's use of the field per this agreement is $200, something like that.
Change, I think.
Right. However, that said, obviously, Major League Baseball has made some major investments in Bowman Field and other areas, and, and I understand as well that in addition to providing their own security for the event, they are anticipating compensating the city for any additional security costs that we might, public safety costs that we might have, and any other damage or, or anything like that that would occur with the field. We did, however, have a short discussion, Mr. Nichols recommended that perhaps with the city's insurance consultant, we should revisit the contract and simply look at some of the numbers and some of the requirements, specifically the requirements for insurance for users of the field, and see whether or not they met current standards. It has been a while since we examined this particular contract, and specifically, perhaps, as it applies to, to larger events at the field, we might want to establish some new requirements. That said, Finance forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, Public Works?
Yes, it did come to Public Works on Tuesday, and as pointed out, this is a, a standard agreement. One of the things that we also brought up was the fact that we would like our insurance consultant, which is also an attorney, to look at the liability insurance amounts, because I feel in today's world, what we're asking for and also what we provide, I'm not an expert in that field, but it certainly, some of these numbers go back 20 years, and we know today the potential for litigation at this point, so we also agree with Finance Committee that we really need to take a look at those numbers. Other than that, it's a standard boilerplate type of agreement, and we passed it to, send it to full council with our approval. Thank you.
Just a quick question about, if I remember correctly, Ms. Mealy, you've invited Ms. Nagy to, or the insurance consultant to be coming to Finance in the near future. Has that date been set?
You know, I'm.
No, we haven't.
I'm simply, yeah, we, we haven't quite set that. In fact, there are a couple of upcoming events that I asked Mr. Nichols, upcoming guests at Finance that I asked Mr. Nichols to arrange for over the next few months.
Would you, would you be sure to inform the rest of council when that is occurring? Because I know, I mean, this is just one of several issues that, that Finance, I think you had told me, were going to be asking Ms. Nagy about when she's able to make it. So there may be other members of council that would like to be there because of the complicated set of things that we know we've been asking her to address. Comments or questions then on the standard resolution for Bowman Field use? The, I'd like to kind of add to something Ms. Mealy said about, obviously, we have a process when people, when an organization wants to use the field, and, and the process must be applied to all users of the field, and, and so a $200 fee seems sort of silly when you're talking about Major League Baseball in the same way that you might be talking about a high school baseball tournament. That said, we all know, and it's been publicly reported, that Major League Baseball is investing a significant sum in our community and, and, in our historic stadium, that further, if indirectly, compensates the community for their use of the stadium and the attention that they'll bring to our community by holding a, a regular season game there. And so, you know, I just wanted to take a second to recognize that investment, that payment above and beyond our standard resolution, as it were, in furthering the, their mission jointly held with Little League Baseball to, to celebrate youth sports and, and youth baseball in particular across this country. That, and recognize that not only are they paying the $200 and change to the community for using that field, but they're also investing in our stadium in a way that we will benefit, and the citizens of this community will benefit from, for many years to come. So I just wanted to take a second to recognize them for that. If there are no other comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and, and the resolution carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Next item on the agenda, we asked Mr. Grado to come back up for a resolution to ratify a municipal assistance program grant contract from P A E D C E D for Park Avenue Neighborhood. Ms. Frank, please, in short form.
Resolution to ratify a municipal assistance program grant contract from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the Park Avenue Neighborhood Revitalization Plan.
Can I motion a second to approve this resolution?
I'll move. Second.
Can you motion a second, Mr. Grado?
Yes, good evening. Again, this item and the next item are related. They're part of the Park Avenue Neighborhood Revitalization Planning Process. Back in February, we applied for a D C E D Municipal Assistance Program Grant in the amount of $30,000. We did get notification from D C E D that we could, that, that we would, were taking all that was left in their account, I guess, $29,353. They wanted a turnaround very quickly, and so we did execute the agreement and sent it back to D C E D. And this resolution is ratifying that action, based on the recommendation from the city solicitor. So with that, it's putting our, the pieces together for the funding for the Park Avenue Revitalization. Part of the contract at the back end is the scope of work that will be used in engaging the consultant. So this is for $29,000. UPMC, which is the partner in this project, and the next resolution will be providing $25,000, City Council budgeted $25,000 in their budget, and RVT is covering 10, which covers the total amount of $89,000, which would have been the total budget amount for the establishment of the revitalization plan. So, this was reviewed by Finance.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
Finance reviewed this and did forward it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. Much like Mr. Grado said, we sort of reviewed the two items in tandem, but obviously, there's not a whole lot to argue with. We asked P A D C E D if they would give us $30,000, they countered with $29,353, and that's a lot better than nothing. So, so we, we positively recommended to council that we ratified the administration's agreement to accept the grant, which already occurred.
Thank you. Comments or questions, members of council? The one thing I'd like to add, and really it covers both resolutions, is that we start, as a community, we started a new model for, for community economic development in partnership in the East Third Street Gateway Project, rather than what had been done for many years prior, investing through, passing through grant funds to a specific corporate entity and local money to a specific corporate entity and hoping for spillover effects. In the East Third Street Gate Project, we piloted a new way to do economic development in which we brought stakeholders together from the private sector, from the public sector, nonprofit sector, and, and of course, from local government in the form of county and, and RVT and, and city government to partner together on a new vision for economic development in a broader area. Through, in that case, the East Third Street Gateway Commission, there was a, a visioning process led that involved a lot of community involvement, an external consultant, partnerships between all of those stakeholders. And then from that plan that was emerged as a playbook, each entity went off and started working on their own piece of the pie. And so in the case of city government, what that has meant is working on specifically infrastructure to support economic development. So we've been working with PennDOT and, and our own on revamping the street infrastructure. Of course, we've been working with Water and Sewer Authority on, on water and sewer infrastructure. We've been working with others on how traffic flows and how the streetscape looks and pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic works in that area, while other entities, like the college, have, have worked on what they call the Gateway Project, and local developers have worked on things that would add to their bottom line, but also the economic vibrancy of that community. We're beginning to see things come to fruition three, four years later. I think that's about right. That's good. It worked. It seems to be working. So a year or two ago, as the city was working with, at the time Susquehanna Health and now UPMC Susquehanna, on revamping pilot agreements and, and existing MOUs, we broached the subject of following that new economic development model in what we're calling the Park Avenue Neighborhood. I remember sitting down with Bob Kane from the hospital and Steve Johnson with the hospital, and others did as well, to talk about this new model of economic development and partnership between the hospital and the city and other stakeholders in that community. In particular, in that community, both for-profit business stakeholders and, and importantly, residential stakeholders, to think that through. Now, the discussions so far, much like they did for East Third Street Gateway, were about, amongst the funding partners to help fund the initial study, in this case, a, oh, help me out with the term here, a revitalization plan. And so the funding partners being D C E D, the city, and UPMC Susquehanna have come together, and RVT, to say, all right, we're going to put a little skin in the game, we're going to create an advisory group, and, and the next step will be to create that advisory group in partnership between administration and council and UPMC and RVT, that will include stakeholders, including those entities that are not funding the first planning dollars, to sit down together and then hire, using the funds that we're securing here tonight, a consultant to lead the revitalization process. Once we have a plan, then everybody can go off and do their piece to implement the plan to aid the economic development in an entirely different way, but the economic development of that neighborhood, which pretty much stretches between the Central Business District and the hospital, and, and really beyond in certain directions. At that point, I think the city's investment, much like it is in, in East Third Street, will be pretty limited. It'll be limited to the infrastructure of the community, but there'll be private entities investing money, there'll be UPMC investing money, there'll be residents investing money in their neighborhood, and all of us working together from a common plan, I hope, in three or four years, will spark a revitalization, much like it has in East Third Street, in that community as well. I, I think I'd applaud all of us, pat ourselves on the back a little bit, for finding a model that might work, and work in a way that doesn't require massive quantities of taxpayer dollars, either from local or state or federal sources, to go into subsidizing corporate entities as a way to hope that we have spillover effects. So I'm excited about this model, and I'm excited about initiating a second version of it in this particular neighborhood, and I'm glad to have been played a part and with all of you to see these next two steps. Resolution number.
Yeah, it's probably.
Do you have a binder started?
Yeah, we've started.
Is this one and two, or is this three and four?
No, we've, this is probably four and five.
Four and five, okay. We'll, we'll go with, he has this tradition of starting a project, and it ends up with 40 or 50, all in one binder, resolutions.
Jonathan, don't scare her.
When you look at the sum total, makes a real important tangible change that we can all be proud of. So here's four and five. So start the binder, and, and we'll look on it longingly in the future years. Look, John Grado left us with one more binder.
One more binder.
Full of resolutions. And so I'm excited about this one in a really serious and important way, in addition to having a little fun on his behalf. So if there are no other comments or questions on the first of the two resolutions related to the grant contract, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that resolution is approved. The next item is a resolution to approve an MOU between the city and the hos, the health system. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city and UPMC Susquehanna for the Park Avenue Neighborhood Revitalization Plan.
Can I motion a second on that resolution?
I'll move. Second.
Can you motion a second? Anything for that, Mr.?
No, this just provides for the $25,000, and then also establishes the advisory committee as is stipulated in the scope of work.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mealy, anything for that?
Finance forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. I suppose it is worthy of noting, as Mr. Grado said in, in committee, that we will first establish the advisory committee, then approve the RFP that will go out for bid, even though we've established more or less the, the bones of the RFP and the application of D C E D. Then the committee will be free to select a consultant. So there are still a few steps once we put the funding package together before we have, before we actually commence the, the visioning process in Park Avenue.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Comments or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. I believe that brings us to a resolution to approve SWIFT Plan scope of work with AMAC. Ms. Frank, please.
Resolution to approve a SWIFT Plan scope of work with AMAC, Foster Wheeler, with coordination from U S Army Corps of Engineer.
Thank you. Can I motion a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion a second, Mr. Greto?
Yes, this is the next step in this long process of levy certification.
What step specifically?
Yeah, very long.
John, stop keeping track.
You know it's bad, then.
The SWIFT is a system-wide improvement framework. Back in October of last year, we submitted our letter of intent to apply for, for that program, which brings us back into at least temporary rehabilitation status under Public Law 8499. It allows our levy to be eligible for rehabilitation should an event occur where damages is done to the levy system, including the pump stations. We did get notification from the Corps that that was accepted. We have a two-year window from February of this year to submit the SWIFT Plan. This is working with AMAC, who will certify our levy once we're completed with all of the work on the deficiencies, to, to begin that process and meet with the Corps. This is apparently a relatively new process for the Baltimore District, so that's why we need to identify what the scope of work is for that. So I did attach, in that letter, it is pretty detailed in what we really have to address, and some of the things we've done to date. The action tonight, transferring some of the stole-mortar assets, which includes the cross pipes, to the stole-mortar authorities part of that. We've also established a work group, levy work group, with the county, the authority, and the city to, and also the other municipalities, Lowell SOC, South Williamsport, and Old Light Coming, to work toward all of our issues in order to get that in place. Our next, with AMAC, just as a point of information, would be, we're working with them to give us a proposal to do the plans and specifications for the relief well rehabilitation, so that's the next step. Funding is in place to do some of this, the design work especially, so council has already approved that. So this was reviewed by both Public Works and Finance.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yes, on Tuesday, we reviewed this, and we were interested in what's coming up on June 28th. There's going to be a workshop with this gentleman from the Army Corps of Engineer. This will be out of town. This is going to be in Whitney Point, New York, and some of our city folks involved in this are going to be going to that. And part of that purpose is because in the letter, and we have heard this before from AMAC, and I just want to read you a couple words from this. Since U S A C E, which is United States Army Corps of Engineer, has not worked out the details of the SWIFT Plan requirements in the Baltimore District, Mr. Skinner concluded that the best approach would be to first hold a scoping workshop with the Corps to determine what the Williamsport SWIFT Plan must include. The proposal below is for the scoping workshop in preparation of the SWIFT Plan scope with the Corps. And hopefully, this is where we're going to get some answers, because these agencies have a tendency to change their method as we go through the process, and they've also admitted they're not sure where they're going. So I think this is going to be very helpful with this workshop, and hopefully, there's going to be some folks that come back with some concrete answers to where we're going to go with this. Because obviously, we don't want to spend money, not knowing that that could be changed, those requirements, somewhere down the road before we're complete with the project. So I, I think this is going to be a good opportunity for us to really have those folks that are going, say, look, you know, we need this in writing, we need to know where we're going, we need to know deadlines, we need to know these things. City council's on our back, we've got to know these things. Put, put the onus on us, because we do need to know that, for budgeting purposes. That's, that's a true statement. So concerning this resolution, we knew that this is going to be, have to be prepared and done, and of course, with the money we've already spent on this, we're now looking at $11,940 additional to AMAC to make this occur. So we voted in the positive, with a positive recommendation to full council for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
Finance also sent this to the full body of city council with a recommendation for approval. While I, I can't guarantee, since we have seen so many resolutions similar to this related to levy, it has to be one of the cheapest ones we've seen.
It is the cheapest.
Which, which isn't saying much, but, but anyway, yes, we, we, the council, we do have the money in place here in the city, and, and it seems pretty reasonable, I guess, although it is yet but a small step on the way to massive quantities of levy expense moving forward.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is resolution to approve Transportation Alternatives Program Federal Aid Letter. Ms. Frank, in short form, please.
Resolution to approve Transportation Alternatives Program Federal Aid Letter of Amendment for the Pathway to Health Phase III Project.
Thank you. Can I motion a second to approve this resolution?
Oh, move.
Second.
Hearing motion a second, Ms. Holliday?
Yes. Attached for your view is a resolution that authorizes the mayor to sign the electronic letter of amendment for the Pathway to Health Phase III Project on the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation ECMS and Reimbursement Agreement System. The PennDOT bid opening was on May 18th of three bidders, Tra Electric won with a low bid of $934,243.37, which was $80,000 under the estimated price. The project total is $1,159,441, sorry, $1,159,441, with 100% federal funds. I think it's important to note that there are no city funds for the construction of this project. The city used Community Development and County Act 13 funds to cover design costs for this project. It's anticipated that the notice to proceed for this project will be in July, and most of the construction will be completed this construction season. This is a transportation alternative program grant for the streetscape work on Maynard Street between First Street and Third Street, and also on First Street between Maynard and Campbell Street. This work includes the traffic signals, curbing, ramps, sidewalk, lighting, and the portal to the historic district. This has been approved by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
Yes, Finance reviewed this and forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. As, as Ms. Holliday just mentioned, it is a totally federally funded project, aside from the design costs, the, the bill for part of which was sort of by the city. I think it was $120,000 out of city funds and $50,000 from the county, was my...
Yes. The reason I came up, I, Joe and I were having a discussion at the table, because since this is an electronic submission, it, I'd like to recommend an amendment to the resolution to add that we include the awarding of the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. That council concurs on that. I discussed this with Norm. What we have in the resolution really is just amending the reimbursement agreement. We would also have to concur in the award to, to allow us to award it electronically. So just to be specific on that, I'd ask that maybe, if possible, council could add the wording after reimbursement agreement system, just including awarding the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, and that would be sufficient.
I'll entertain such a motion.
Okay. We need specific wording?
It's in, it's in materials.
Yeah, the, as, if you have a copy of the bid tabulation with the three bidders, so...
But I'm saying, do we need to merely vote for the amendment?
Do we need specific wording for the amendment itself? Can you provide specific wording?
Yes, if you just add...
Be it further resolved?
Be it further resolved that the mayor or designated or authorized to execute the necessary electronic documents under the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation ECMS system and reimbursement agreement system, including awarding the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. Tra Electric.
Do I have a motion? I think Mr. Noviello...
I'll second that.
In that? Do you agree to that emotion?
I do.
And a second for Ms. Mealy. Any comments or questions on the motion to amend? Hearing none, Ms. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the amendment passes. Back to the original resolution as amended. Comments or questions?
Nothing, well, the, the only thing is, as I think probably everyone noticed in the memo, that initially, we had expected the electric to come in higher, so we initially, we were directed by PennDOT to limit the scope or reduce the scope of the work to meet the estimated cost. Then the contract came in lower. Meanwhile, PennDOT also found some extra money. Consequently, that leaves us with a chunk of cash with which we can do the work that we had originally not intended to do, and perhaps further items. So, all in all, pretty good news, and a little surprising, I suppose. But, but aside from that, as I said, Finance found this to be better than in line with our expectations, so...
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Frank, on the resolution as amended.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution as amended passes. What, oh, Mr. Greto, I was going to ask, what number was that one for Pathway to Health? Okay, I'll let you look for that for me later.
This files.
Binder two, is that what you said? Help me if I'm wrong, but I believe that brings us to number 19 on the agenda, except for filing?
Yes, we are.
Looks like the early estimates were about right on. So the next item on the agenda then is except for filing. We have the Finance meeting minutes of March 16th, 2017, and Controller's Report of April 2017. Can I motion a second to approve these for filing?
Oh, move. Second.
Hearing motion a second. Comments or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Frank.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are except for filing. Next item on the agenda is announcements. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, June 22nd at 7:30 in City Hall Council Chambers. Other upcoming meetings are Monday, June 12th at noon is the Planning Commission meeting, and at 4:00 p.m. is the Recreation Commission. Wednesday, June 14th at 1:00 p.m. is the Bowman Field Commission, and at 3:30 is O N E Pension Board. Thursday, June 15th at 10:30 a.m. is Zoning Hearing Board, and at 4:00 p.m. is the Board of Health. On Tuesday, June 20th at 10:00 a.m. is the Blighted Property Committee meeting. At noon is Public Works. At 3:30 is Finance. At 4:00 p.m. is Brandon Park and Shade Tree Commission, and at 6:30 p.m. is the HARP. Also on June 20th, and this is a special announcement, given the results of the ordinance that we discussed earlier in first reading, I had tentatively arranged a, a town hall meeting that I am now setting for Tuesday, June 20th at 7:00 p.m. to be held in the third floor facility of the Train and Transit Two Center. The purpose of the town hall meeting is for the public to be able to ask, to learn more about and ask questions about the process involving the charter commission and the work that they would undertake if they are approved by the, the voters. In other word, the speakers at the town hall meeting are tentatively set to be Ed Fosnot, who works for the governor's local government...
Works for an arm of D C E D that operates directly under the governor, and is basically an advisory commission for municipalities in the state of Pennsylvania.
So he works for the state government to advise local governments on such issues. He is tentatively scheduled to speak at that town hall meeting. Also will be city solicitor J. David Smith, who has done much of the research that I relied upon and that council relied upon in setting up this process. So the purpose of that town hall is to begin, to continue the process of informing the public in a very transparent way about how the process might unfold. The timing of the town hall meeting is to occur, of course, after the council agreed to, in first reading, to undertake the process, but prior to the final decision that council will make to put the referendum on the ballot in the fall. As I indicated earlier, my intention to do whatever I can do to make sure that the public is fully informed in a very transparent way about every part of this process as it unfolds, so that they can make fully informed decisions, that they will ultimately be the decision maker throughout this process. So the Tuesday, June 20th meeting is a really important meeting, I think, for the public to attend, to hear what Mr. Fosnot and Solicitor Smith have to say about how the process works, and then ask questions about how the process works. It's for their purpose, for the public's benefit. It's, council, of course, may be in attendance. Not everyone probably can make it, but will do their best to attend, so that they can also be informed before the final reading about the process. But in particular, this is for the public to begin their information process. So I want to make sure that that is announced, and hopefully, the media, if they're, who is not still here, is paying attention. Ms. Frank, if you could make sure that Mr. Maroney is fully aware of that tomorrow, because I'm sure he'll be by, as he often is on Fridays, to say hi to you, that would be useful. And others on council, I'd encourage you to make sure that people are aware of that meeting that'll be held the Tuesday prior to our next council meeting, where the ordinance will receive its second and final reading. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Are there comments by members of council? Mr. Noviello?
Just a bit on a lighter note here this evening, just to have a reminder that this Saturday at 9:00 in the morning will be the eighth running of our resurrected All-American Soapbox Derby on Market Street Hill. There are literally, frankly, dozens of people and sponsors who have been loyally involved over the past years, so, so many that I don't want to take the time now to try to attempt to thank them all individually for fear of leaving someone out, obviously. It's enough to say our steering committee thanks all of them for their continuing support. I will add that our yearly raise has garnered some rather nice acknowledgements in, that we... I will add that our yearly race has garnered some rather nice acknowledgements that we think are worthy of quick mention. In 2010, our race received the Best New Race City Award among 12 other new cities racing that year. In 2011, we received the Most Outstanding Race City Award. In 2013, Jim Campbell, a name not too unfamiliar to many of us here, received the Most Outstanding Derby Director Award. And in 2016, we won the Most Outstanding Race Organization Award. So the city has shown rather well in this competition. It's international, so we're making a name for ourselves, and we've created a nice little legacy to follow up on the legacy that we left behind, I think, just prior to World War II, before it was called off and it's running. So we feel we're back on track again now, and we are one of the only, we are only one of two other organizations in the international spectrum here that has sponsored cars, one of which is by Mr. Nichols and RVT as well, and we thank him for that. So we got a little bit of a recognition for having that type of a race among all those that do not... In the process of that, what that does is it alleviates any expenses whatsoever for any of our competing drivers and their families. So this is purely for the kids and their families, and a nice opportunity for our community to come out and support these kids doing some good things. So thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely, and thank you for your involvement as well. Any other comments from members of council? Mayor, your administration?
Yes. Yes, thank you. In 20 years of public service, I don't remember one person coming to a city council meeting advocating a change of government. Do any of you? I know Mr. Nichols says in his amount of time, he's never experienced that. I'd like to know who these constituents are, because I'd like to speak with them. It's a big surprise to me. Now, this is just my opinion, no offense, but I believe city council's thinking is flawed in regards to changing the form of government. Our administration has brought many positive initiatives, even tonight, and oftentimes, at these council meetings, many of you say a lot of good things about how we are progressing and planning for the future. But you want to change our present productive form of government? What a contradiction. This is political. It is clear, many of you on city council do not want checks and balances like the state and federal government. Seven bosses overseeing department heads, and comparing Williamsport to Lock Haven. A lot of good people in Lock Haven, but I think we're progressing a lot more in Lock Haven. A city manager will not answer to the taxpayers. Our nation was formed by separation of powers. This does not. Such a change will cost taxpayers more, as a study will be conducted. A city manager makes much more than a mayor. Many of them make at least $125,000 a year. And you're probably going to advocate a public safety director, because many of you talked about that just about a couple of years ago. Another added expense. And this will definitely increase legacy costs, and many of you talk about legacy costs. You're paying an employee more dollars, that's going to be more legacy costs. Why do this when so many developments are happening and are planned to happen? Remember, the city has an A-plus bond rating and is well-managed. This isn't Gabe Campana saying it, it's standards and poor. Please look it up. If city council wants to save money, instead of advocating for tax increases every year, I believe city council, as part-time employees, should get up, should give up their health care. And I know I talked to a couple of you that said to me privately, if I didn't have health care, I wouldn't bother being on city council. Every member of city council receives health care for himself or herself and for their family. It costs the Williamsport taxpayers $158,000 a year. What other employee in the city of Williamsport that works part-time receives full-time health care? I don't know of any. Even school directors, we've talked about school directors tonight, school directors do not receive health care. I also believe city council positions should be citywide, if you're talking about improving the government, giving representation to various wards that are not being representative. And I believe that Newberry should have an automatic seat on city council, the way that they've been treated over the years. I believe that's the way to go. These ideas would make a better government, but of course, you're not going to see any of these initiatives made by any of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from your administration? Mr. Nichols?
Yes, I just, you may have seen this in the paper, it's been on the radio for the viewing public, this Saturday, beginning at 9:00 AM through 3:00 o'clock, up at Elm Park, we'll be selling the seats that were removed from Bowman Field that are being replaced by new box seats. So we were able to salvage about 100 sets, they come in pairs of two, and they're being sold for $50. So a great, unique Father's Day gift for your man cave, for your backyard, for John Gray's going away gift. Oh, sorry, now you know what you got. Anyway, so, anyway, Joe Pavlock's going to be there with some help to see, be first come, first served. I don't know if he'll sell all 100 sets, but that'll go towards improvements that are being made at Bowman Field. So we hope to raise, you know, quite a bit of money by doing that, and it's a good piece of history. Like I said, these were installed in 1994, and have been in part of being Bowman Field until early this year. So it's a piece of history from Bowman Field. So come on out and buy a couple seats.
Thank you.
Any comments from the general public? Mr. Miller, again. Mr. Miller?
Scott Miller, 822 Tucker Street. The golden rule, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. The silver rule, do not do unto others as you would not want them to do unto you. The poor conditions of streets can cause excessive wear and tear on vehicles and otherwise cause increased operational costs that a dollar amount can be ascribed to those poor conditions. I myself have had tires and brakes worn prematurely and other damages to my vehicles, which, like it or not, I must suffer, suffer the expense of repairing and replacing, as do all drivers. Last year, city codes department wrote up my garage for needing paint and repairs, none of which would have impacted anyone at any time, but essentially, I had to comply or else suffer a financial loss, namely fines. So I paid for said repairs to my garage. In short, I painted and put wainscoting on them. In the past few years, my wife and child had urgent and/or emergency medical conditions that required treatment. These cost me tens of thousands of dollars, or as I like to half-jokingly say, I could have bought and paid for two of my houses for what they cost me. The city has streets that by your own admission, say, need repairs, assuming you do not put streets on the list to be resurfaced that are in good condition. Year after year, some of these streets are passed over due to lack of money. Now, when I bring forth to the city streets and other infrastructure that are needed to repair or point to the list of streets and infrastructure that the city is directly responsible for maintaining in good condition, I hear every excuse under the sun. Williamsport can destroy my vehicles and cause me a financial loss. Can I destroy city property? No. Williamsport can tell me, make repairs or else, we will fine you. Can I do that to the city? No. Williamsport can say, we don't have the money to fix our infrastructure. Can I say the exact same thing to the city? No. Now, what I am told by city council, the mayor, and other city officials is, if we do the right thing and make the necessary needed repairs, taxes would have to be increased, and have threatened to make me the poster child for raising everyone's taxes, saying to me, do you want to be the reason everyone's taxes go up? In essence, threatening to make me hated and a potential victim of their hatred, all because I don't want to suffer losses. Sure, blame the victim. The city doesn't care if vehicle, if our vehicles are destroyed. The city doesn't care if the repairs are in our budget. The city doesn't care if we have unexpected expenses. Your actions speak louder than your words. Is the government above the law, is being liked and popular more important to you than doing your job, jobs you asked for? You in your long robes that sit at the head of the table are good at telling everybody what they have to do, what they must do, but you don't follow those same rules. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you, and do not do unto others as you would not have them do unto you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Any other comments from the general public? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
Hearing a motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.